All right, it is five thirty and I would like to call this meeting of the Faribault School Board to order. Mister Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mister Chair, we have a quorum, but one person is absent.
And then would you rise to the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item two of our agenda is approval, and I'd like to propose one change in the agenda, and that is item eight B ten. Discussion and possible action on the Faribault Middle School eighth grade pre-academy proposal and the FHS ninth grade academy proposal, pending further information at our next work session. Are there any other concerns or questions or items about changing the agenda in any other way?
Just the, just the subsac meeting.
Ah, yes, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, and under item twelve, dates to remember was not inadvertently not included, subsac, our special ed co-op, and do you want to give them the initial, what the initials stand for?
Cannon Valley Special Ed Co-op.
Okay.
Yep.
And that meeting will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, at four thirty P M at the district office. Okay, with those two changes, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mister Chair, can I just ask, the first one, eight B ten, that would be then, we'd have a presentation at our May ninth work session?
The, yes, pending the work session information, it's going to be present additional information and discussion at that time, and then we would anticipate if we're going to, if we decide to continue to move forward at our next regular board meeting on...
May twenty-third.
May twenty-third, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mister Chair, I'll move approval.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the agenda with the changes previously announced. All those in favor say aye.
Nope.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a roll call.
Agenda?
No.
No?
No.
The consent agenda is?
Sorry. No, you're aye, Tom.
We both sit corrected.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Vote for passes. All right, that brings us to recognitions, awards, and presentations, and I did not see any in my packet of materials.
Nope.
All right, that brings us to item four, community comment, with a three-minute limit per speaker, fifteen-minute limit per topic. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? We know that public speaking is terrifying, but if you came to speak, come now, please. Seeing no motion from the audience, I believe we can move on to item five, the consent agenda. And I am, would like to propose that we separate our resignations of...
Retirements.
Reti- I'm sorry, not reti- not resignations, retirements from the consent agenda so that we might identifi- identify and thank those people individually, many long-term employees. So with that notice, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll, I think I can, I'll move that we...
You can just pull them out.
Pull the retirements, so we need to vote on that?
No, you just need to pull up. We want to take out, so if you want to go through.
I'll put your list.
Oh, I've got, I've got a list.
Go ahead.
Miss Suzy Anthony, Miss Mary Canny, Mister Mark Lesman, Mister David Olson, Miss Vicky Swedine, and Mister Lyle Turtle. So if we could remove those for later comment, I believe we need a roll call, do we need a motion to adopt with changes?
Mister Chair, I'll move adoption of the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
And a second. All right, we need a roll call vote on this item.
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mister Chair, it passes six zero.
Thank you very much. All right. This is where we will do our recognitions. All right. Anyone who would like to speak, and any, for any particular person is certainly welcome to do so, I've mentioned their names. Miss Suzy Anthony, currently working as the council secretary at the high school after twenty-three years of service to the Faribault Public Schools. Do we need to act on these individually? Uh-huh. All right. Suzy was there when I was there, and she was a wonderful person to work with.
Mister Chair, I'll move approval of Suzy Anthony's retirement.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Good luck, Miss Anthony. All right, the next name on our list is a longtime elementary teacher, currently working fifth grade teacher at Roosevelt Elementary, Miss Mary Canny. It's been my pleasure to work with Mary over a great number of years, and she will be missed. I'll entertain a motion to accept Miss Canny's retirement.
I'll make a motion to accept Miss Canny's retirement.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Good luck, Miss Canny. All right. Next one is... Wrong letter, there we go. Mister Mark Lesman, our auto mechanics teacher extraordinaire. Mister Lesman has been an employee of the Faribault Public School for a total of thirty-two years. His automotive teams participating in the Ford AAA competition have won the state championship at least twelve times, to my memory. Also were national champions. Students participating in that program have earned hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships. It is a, an amazingly successful program due to the hard work of many people, including Mister Lesman and his advisory council and the administration and other staff members of the Faribault Public Schools. So I wish Mister Lesman well in his retirement.
I'll say just a couple words about Mark, Mark is most well-known in the community for the outstanding skills of his students going to these competitions. About a year ago, I started coaching robotics, and I started to notice that every single night I was there, Mark was there with his two students getting prepared for those competitions. So there is no secret sauce, the answer to why Mark and his students do so well is because they work really hard at it. He shows tremendous dedication as to, as to his students, and it was remarkable to see his dedication, and I congratulate him on so many years of outstanding service to the district.
Thank you, sir. I believe I need a motion. So moved.
Second.
All right, those in favor of approving retirement of Mister Mark Lesman, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Bon voyage, Mister Lesman. Next person is Mister David Olson, school psychologist. Mister Olson has worked with our district for a total of twenty-five years. And while his work may not have gotten the publicity, it is no less valuable to our district. So, thank you, Mister Olson. I need a motion if we're gonna let him retire?
Second.
Those in favor of approving the retirement of Mister David Olson, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is another person with whom I was fortunate to work for a number of years, and whose work particularly affected my own daughter, who has gone on to serve in the same capacity at several schools. I'm speaking of Miss Vicky Swedine, German teacher at the Faribault High School for a total of thirty-two years. So with special thanks to Miss Swedine for all her efforts, her trips to Europe, guiding students, all those things, and more, and the pleasure of working with you, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for Miss Swedine's retirement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor of allowing Miss Swedine to retire? Not allowing, approving her retirement. I wish we had enough power sometimes. Approving her retirement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. And... Last on my list, I hope I'm not missing anybody, is retirement of Mister Lyle Turtle, principal of Faribault High School. Mister Turtle has served this district for twenty years in a variety of capacities, assistant principal, and later on, principal of the high school. He had come to us after serving overseas for several, in several different locations, and was always interesting to hear him tell stories. So unless there are other comments?
Mister Chair, I'll move approval.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
We have an emotion, a motion and a second to approve approval, to make approval of Mister Lyle Turtle's retirement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mister Chair, I think we missed Mister Dragich.
Yep.
Mister Joe Dragich.
And you're certainly welcome to pull him out, if you, well, actually, we, I don't know if we pulled him out.
He was not mentioned earlier, and the logic behind that is that we spoke about Mister Dragich last year.
This is the second time.
And even though he's...
You only get one thing.
Many work, no, no. Joe's contributions are many and varied, but he came back in a part-time basis this year, so we weren't pulling that out.
Okay, thank you.
No offense, Joe. Don't come looking for me, please. All right. I believe we are now on item six, the curriculum committee, and Miss Cardenuno, I think, has a report for us.
Good evening, I will be brief tonight, we had a presentation of the eighth and ninth grade academy proposals, and we had a great deal of discussion on that, and it basically took the whole, whole meeting time. It was, it was a presentation of a proposal that we would like to bring forward to the board at the next work session. Our finance and our curriculum committee has, has approved, and they are in favor of the academies, but we need to have some more discussions, as you know. I know Tom or Jason, if you want to add anything, that was basically the whole meeting.
Yeah, no, I, I think it highlighted the need for a longer board discussion, to my mind, it was a, it was a great discussion, I thought. And it, it did end up taking the whole meeting, and I thought there were lots of good points brought up, and so I look forward to the board hearing that during the presentation.
Yeah, and so I'll, I'll hold the discussion until the, till the next meeting.
Okay, and I concur, I was there as well. All right. No report from technology, according to my list. Maria, you're not off the hook, though, we're gonna come back to you in a little bit. Policy committee, report from the April twelfth, two sixteen, twenty sixteen meeting.
Andre, you wanna? It's mainly statutes and very minor language.
Very minor language changes is what we did on all of these really, but there was one, though, that wasn't in our...
Yeah, the, the transition to return to work policy.
That's the one that we're adding.
Yes.
New.
Yep.
Otherwise, the other ones were all just very minimal wording changes, so...
Okay, so this is just part of our, our usual process of reviewing those, and this is first reading this evening?
Yep, exactly.
All right, so for the policy four thirty, transitional return to work policy, policy eight oh five, waste reduction and recycling, policy eight oh six, crisis management policy, eight oh seven, health and safety policy, policy seven oh one point one, budget modification, and policy nine oh five, advertising will come back at a later date.
Yep.
All right, that brings us to the finance committee. Looking for a report minutes from their April eighteenth, twenty sixteen meeting.
Mister Chair, I thought we had a very productive meeting, we had a lot of discussion about the technology requests, as well as, we did see a presentation in the eighth and ninth grade academy, which you guys received for the session. I am, my impression overall at the meeting was that finance committee members were in support of all the contracts that were presented, with the exception of the transportation software, which we're gonna address at the end of this agenda. It was, it looks like there was a change in what was presented at the finance committee. The finance committee asked that Colleen talk to the bus company about the software costs, and as you could see, she addressed that in the letter, which she'll go over at the end of the finance committee contracts. But otherwise, the contracts were approved by the finance committee, with a great deal of discussion about technology.
All right, well, we have some questions about technology after item, after item five, B five. All right, I believe we need to take action on a number of items. Item B one, the Saint Cloud Concurrent Enrollment Agreement, and Mister Sesker, could you update or refresh our memory about that item?
Yeah, as you recall, one of the, the pieces of our vision was to increase the number of college credits for our students, and so this is one way to do that. Our business academy is proposing that we get utilized Saint Cloud State University for our college within the school program, and that would be three thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars per section for up to thirty students.
Okay, and this, this is particularly the, the program that Mister Kegler, I believe, presented to us at our work session. All right, further questions or comments on item one, Saint Cloud's Concurrent Enrollment Agreement? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor of approving the Saint Cloud Concurrent Enrollment Agreement regarding our business classes, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, the South Central College Concurrent Enrollment Agreement. And my recollection is this is something we've been doing for a number of years, and...
Two years.
Two years, okay, but there are no significant changes in the agreement as presented here tonight.
Correct.
Any questions or comments about the South Central item? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve item B two.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second, all those in favor of the South Central College Concurrent Enrollment Agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight B three, the River Bend Nature Center contract. And there were a couple of changes.
Just basically the fee, yeah, has changed.
Two percent increase.
Little, fairly small, is my recollection tells me. All right, any other questions or discussion on the River Bend Nature Center contract?
I would just add that Colleen did feel it really is working well with the curriculum at the schools, but they have been very cooperative working with the schools to match the curriculum with the field trips. So we're grateful for that.
Well, I, I remember some long and detailed discussions about how valuable this has been during, during the dark years when we were considering cuts, and nothing I've ever, that I've seen would change the value of that. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the River Bend Nature Center contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of approving item eight B three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to eight B four, the Tri Valley Opportunity Council Agreement. I'm gonna need some help with this one.
You, Rob, could help you out.
Yes, just the man we were looking for.
This agreement is between us and the Tri Valley Head Start Program. Every year, we reconfirm our commitment to provide evaluation services for student stay screen and determine maybe at risk for having a disability. Last year, I brought this to the board in November, this year, I'm trying to be a little bit proactive and efficient, so I'm bringing it to the board prior to the year it goes into effect, instead of after it goes into effect, so... It's, it's fulfilling our obligation under IDEA to evaluate kids who are suspected of having a disability and within our boundaries.
One, one question.
Yeah.
Why do you evaluate these, our students? I mean, I've had a discussion with Mister Sesker, is there any time in the summer to do this with, you know, with developing I E Ps before the school starts? Because then, oh, kid walks in, then they're behind because it's, you know, backlog or whatever, so is there any discussion? I haven't, like, the school psychologist before school starts?
The Tri Valley Agreement is for the Head Start Program.
Oh, just for the head, not for hours?
Which is birth to three. Our birth to three programs are required to evaluate during the summer because, because when children are below age three, the idea is that every minute counts, every minute that you could be servicing a student if they need a service for disabilities counts. And so they do work during the summer. For school-aged children, special education evaluations are very dependent on a educational need, and it's very difficult for the school to find an educational need when the student is not in school. So typically, we, we wait until school is in session so that we can meet our obligation to do pre-referral interventions and follow the due process that's outlined in the IDEA legislation.
But is it, are you behind the curve, then? Basically, school starts and you don't know where to place the student?
You know, we, it's a balancing act, and the risk is, do we evaluate them and maybe not have the information we need to make a correct diagnosis, or do we wait and get the information that we need from the teachers who are seeing that student and make a correct diagnosis? Now, if we had year-round school, that might not be an issue. But I don't want to bring that topic up.
You just did.
Any other questions about the Head Start?
Is there any, any discussion of change in the policy of, because evaluating school-aged children before school starts?
Again, it's very dependent on teacher reports of how the student is doing in the educational environment.
So you want to try them in the classroom first?
Correct.
I mean, I think there's probably some ongoing work that's done with the student that's already in the system. You know, you might need to make corrections or changes ahead of time, but you don't want to over-identify kids. You might be in a position where you're doing that, I can see that.
Now, how fast can you get to these students, normally?
Once, once they go through the child study process, the law allows us thirty school days to complete an evaluation from start to finish. Typically, we can get that done quicker, it depends on the time of the school year, it depends on the, on the amount of students served in the assessment process.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, the way I read this section, this particular item that we're being asked to approve is related to preschool, three, ages three and four?
Um, yes, but it, birth to...
Birth, okay.
Yeah, birth to ages three.
And then, at least part of what Mister Olson is bringing up would be older children that may...
School age.
Need to be evaluated. And would it be correct to assume that, now that we're approaching the end of the year, staff might be at a point where they would refer a student for, you know, whatever the whole process is to evaluate them?
Yeah, that's certainly possible.
Okay, but it, it, technically, it could occur at any time?
Yeah, so the law is very clear that we are allowed thirty school days during the summer, we don't have school, therefore, the timelines would get cloudy. So if we started an evaluation now, being that there's less than thirty school years, thirty school days left in the calendar year, we would end that evaluation in September, the first couple weeks.
Ah, I see. So if a, if a teacher was concerned, and if they were to make a referral thirty or more days before the end of the school year, that evaluation would be done at that point. But if it comes after that thirty-day mark, then we need to carry that over.
Correct.
All right, thank you, clarified it for me.
Mister Chair, I'll move approval.
All right, thank you, we have a motion to approve the Tri Valley Opportunity Council Agreement, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of approving the Tri Valley Opportunity Council Agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to eight B five, the Infinite Campus Food Service Software Module Proposal. We have had some information regarding that previous.
I can summarize, and then if you want to bring it clean up, you can, but basically, we have...
Questions, we will.
Yeah, we have, we have two softwares, and this is just taking the current software and putting it into Infinite Campus. As you may or may not know, I guess, Infinite Campus is what we use for our large student information system, it's a huge program, and we just think it's redundant to have two. Infinite Campus software right now, it's, it's, it's a good software that we can incorporate the food service piece within that. So rather than going two separate softwares, we'll just incorporate it into one, that's what we'd like to do.
Could also be able to have the free-reduce application online for people to complete, which would hopefully increase that application number.
And then parents have online access to their family accounts, could make payments or check status or...
Yeah, they can do that already at this software, but this would certainly integrate it better with this, our current student information system.
Yeah, it's a secure site.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I think they both are, but this, we monitor the, the Infinite Campus site, I, I don't know, you have to ask Maria that. I'm assuming that we have that monitored by our S I S person pretty careful.
Mister Schubert, is, is, is there any software going away because we're putting the software, software in, or is...
Yeah, it's, what's the name of the current soft, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to ask, I don't remember the name of the current software we're using.
The current software is called PCS, and it's fairly old and not as user-friendly as we'd like it to be, doesn't have as many bells and whistles, as we've talked about, this new software will have everything online for the free-reduced, and it feeds right into the system, so we don't have that duplication of effort of having to approve the applications in PCS and then manually enter the information into Infinite Campus. So that current software is costing about thirty-three hundred dollars a year, compared to the eighty...
Some of this, but certainly not all of it.
Yeah.
But this does come out of the food service money.
Correct. And that fund balance is very healthy, so...
Thank you, I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Infinite Campus Food Service Software Module Proposal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. I would like to invite Miss Maria Hansen to step forward, and we are looking at three items particularly related to technology, and I understand that she has some information... And I understand that she has some information that we should hear before we choose to act or on any of these. So whatever you have to say, let us have.
The first thing I have is the iPad and loan agreement changes. The tech committee and the cabinet committee are proposing to increase the insurance fees for our iPads. We are changing the name from insurance fee to protection plan. And we're also looking to modify the repair procedures for our devices. And I brought some sample iPads just to show you some of the issues that we are facing right now. The proposal is to raise the base rate, the reduced rate and the free rate to those center column items forty, twenty-five and fifteen. So we're looking at increasing the rate for our families and this would take effect on August first if we did implement it. And we're also looking at changing the repair procedures. Right now, after a second instance of a device or second claim, the student pays the current fee again. We're requesting that after the second claim, it be a hundred dollars and after the third claim, it'd be the full cost of the device. We are trying to be a little bit proactive with repairs and we have replaced the cases for grade six through eight this year. And we look to replacing the cases again for the incoming sixth graders in fall. And that helps reduce the repairs a bit. We were just asking that the fees be changed for next year.
Maria, can I ask a question? At the finance meeting, you said that the, the damages were above and beyond what we had initially projected.
Yes.
So the money that was above and beyond, did that come out of a technology fund? Or where did those excess funds come from? And then also the, the funds to get the middle schoolers the new, we'll call it Otterbox type cases or shells. Where, where did those funds come from?
The, the repairs, actually for the damages, they're a higher percentage than we initially anticipated. The cost for the cases came out of technology. And right now the cost for the repairs have also come out of, I believe, general fund or general fund for the repairs. We utilize first the money that came from the insurance that we collected in the fall and then the rest came out of general fund.
How much over were the damages, do you know, versus the, versus the insurance fund?
How much over? Right now, as today, we've spent about forty-three thousand dollars in repairs.
Is that above and beyond the self-insurance fund?
Yes.
So forty-three thousand above?
Yeah. Forty-three thousand total.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have the exact amounts of how much of that is above what we collected.
Okay.
With the devices, there also has been an increase in the screen cost to, to fix devices. Right now, the average cost to fix a damaged device is a hundred and ninety-nine.
How much?
Hundred and ninety-nine.
What are they, what are they worth? I mean, what new?
The devices are new, they're four seventy-nine. But they have a, a digitizer on there that they have to replace when they replace the screen. So this is one here that has extensive, extensive damage.
Cause if you turn it sideways, that thing is really bent. I mean, how do these students treat these?
Ones like this, we are charging.
I mean, is it a frisbee or what, what is it?
That looks like a clay bishop.
Most of our damages, most of our damages have been at our middle school level and that's why we replace the cases there. I, I just don't know how they're getting damaged. Ones like this, it's beyond accidental, so we're asking the families to pay the full price of the repair.
Now, are they?
Uh, no, not really, not a lot of them.
Well, then what, what's the policy?
Right now, if a student damages a device beyond repair, they do not get another device until we're able, until we get the cost to repair them.
Then what happens?
They just do their work without a, without an iPad. So they can use the computers in the schools, they can use computers at home, they just have to get their assignments a different way.
But then collecting the, this money from, well, it's not the kids, it's the parents. You know, four hundred and what, ninety, seventy dollars, whatever you said, I mean, what are you doing with that? Cause they are responsible for their students.
If they, if they're not, if they do not pay, we give them a certain amount of time to pay the fee. And if they don't pay, they, it goes to collections. So then the collections takes care of the payments, following up on the payment of the devices.
What's been the impact of the new cases at the middle school? Has it been dramatic or just a little bit?
Um, it's been much, much better. It's not to say that we haven't had a few damages. Usually if the kid, if the student takes the device out of the case, you know, or they're trying to clean it and then accidentally falls. There are some, a little bit stretching of the, the new cases. So we're trying to teach students to, to use them appropriately. I did find with these newer cases, we can replace just the top covers if we need to replace the top cover and not have to replace the entire case. But it has brought down the, the number of damages significantly.
And what about the high school? Is it a lot lower damage?
The high school did not have as many damages. Having four grade levels, they were at eight percent. And that's at four, with four grade levels. And we broke it down by ninth, tenth and eleventh and we found our, our juniors and seniors are very responsible with the devices. It's the younger grades, the lower age students, you've seen the most damage. Which is one of the reasons why this year we're allowing our eleventh graders to take home the devices over the summer as a pilot. Because the next year's seniors have been responsible with the devices.
The juniors are the only ones that get to take them home?
Right now, yeah, next year's seniors. The ones that we collect from the seniors this year will be repurposed for the sixth graders.
Okay, why, okay, why are they taking them home? For what reason?
We're doing it as a pilot project right now. It is a big job to collect the iPads and that's what I'm working on right now is determining a schedule to collect all the devices this summer. And it, it's a big process to manage. And some schools are, are experimenting with the idea of letting the students take the devices home over the summer. So they can still use and still continue to learn over the summer. We also are allowing our summer school students to keep the devices until summer school is over. And we're gonna be using some of them for summer steam also. So we're trying to use the devices as much as we can.
Maria, what happens in that scenario where a junior and their family moves and they don't turn in the iPad?
Um, we can lock the device and so it becomes unusable. And then we can trace it to a point as long as it's on the wifi network. And then we just pursue the family and try to get it back, contact them as best we can.
Have, have we lost any now due to families moving type of thing?
Um, for the most part, we got them all back. Maybe it might be one or two families that we haven't been able to get ahold of. Then they go to collections for cost for replacement.
Have, have we actually turned people over to collections for this week?
Yes, we've had a few families that we have to do that. We make every attempt first to contact the families, send letters home, phone calls. And then after a certain amount of time, we just pass to collections.
I mean, I, I know you're proposing these new rates, so I don't think you'd propose them if you didn't feel that they were enough. I'll go back to my comments at the finance committee meeting. I, I don't know if they're enough. You know, I look at a new phone that anybody gets and either they pay a much larger insurance rate and they have a deductible immediately of like a hundred dollars for a new iPhone or Samsung, two most popular phones. Or they have a monthly fee factored into it, into their, built into their plan and, and then they still have a deductible. And I, I just worry about this not being enough and we'll spend a fair amount more again. I mean, at, at some point, I don't know what the magic number is, but, but we have to connect, ma- make it enough where the, the kids and the families do respect the device. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money, a lot of damages. And I know accidents happen, I completely understand that, but we also know some destruction is intentional too, so.
I did look at some other districts and just to see what they charge and, and we're about in that same range, thirty to forty dollars. I think forty dollars was the most I've seen. Some districts, what they'll do is they'll charge the same amount to all families, all students. Others do break it down like we do. So it varies by, by school. Some of the damages, like the second repair are either more or less. There's one school that first time it's covered, the second time it's a hundred and fifty dollars. We're charging a hundred, we're asking to charge a hundred. So we're trying to be considerate of our families too and, and just try to do the best we can to eliminate damages. And still have, um, not be so much an expense.
Shouldn't they be considerate that this is school district property, that we all own it?
Yes.
And, and then it's, you know, they use it as frisbee or they get mad because, you know, whatever reason, emotional distress and you break it over a knee or something. I mean.
There, there's been some issues and then, and I, you know.
I mean, that is, oh, I love that, yeah.
So when, when, when one becomes beyond repair, then, then it's brought to administration and administration deals with it also. So it's, it's more, there is a follow-up with the student and the family when, when extensive damage is done. And, and that's why, you know, we just do not, we try to honor our system and we try to give a loner device. We try to have students check out a device and leave it at school, but all that just gets too hard to manage. Now we just, our policy is if you do not make payment, you do not get another iPad and hopeful payment is made.
Maria, those two instances that you showed us, I'm sorry, I can't help but laugh a little bit at them. In that case, that still gets replaced for free the first time?
No, no.
No?
When, when it's, when it's to this point, if you can't see, but there's a slight bend in it too. And there's a bend to it, I, I can't, I can't fix it. Same thing if it gets water damaged.
But, but that is not a drop on the floor.
No, this is beyond a drop on the floor. And I, and I, you know, when it gets dropped on the floor, you'll see it's just a hairline crack.
Right. This is, you, they, they beat a kid over the head or something or hit a baseball.
Just, so clarification, who determines the excessive amount of force on those machines? I mean, we talk about it, but you have a resource that determines that force.
I can send them to Apple. I send pictures to Apple and, and they'll say it's beyond reasonable repair. So I can, I have an Apple source. If there's a question on a device, I can send this to.
But then we're gonna give a device to that child again. No.
Not unless the pay, full payment is made. So in this case, I would charge full payment. If it's just a, a, a screen damage, it depends on what the situation is. Every situation's a little different.
How is not having an iPad affecting the kids that don't have them and the teachers who are teaching with iPads? How is that?
Call it, Colleen.
Okay.
You know, we, we told our teachers upfront when we handed out iPads that there is the possibility that some of our students would have to have alternative curriculum. You know, paper copies and, or et cetera. And so they might have to go back the old fashioned way. It is frustrating to our staff to have kids in their classroom that don't have iPads. But I think most of them do understand, you know, from obvious, you know, they do understand why, why a student might not be able to handle that. Be responsible enough to have an iPad. So our staff is, is great with working with our kids and, and they'll help us work around it. It's been support from them at this, at this time.
I still have a problem with, with the eleventh graders taking them home. I, I don't know what else to say.
Talk to the student, maybe have some perspective.
I didn't say, she's got a smile on her.
Talk to Jenna.
But then, that's a good student, we're talking.
She's got a pretty good, she's got a pretty good insight on the student body.
To me, I thought these were like, when I was at school, you had to turn your books in. Why can't, they should be turned in, that these are ours and all of a sudden, now you give them three months to, to break them?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna.
More unsupervised?
Go ahead, Colleen, speak.
I feel most kids, like this is a type of organization for them. So I think it'd be nice to have throughout the summer to look back at and have that on there. So I don't like, I, on notability, you have all your classes in there. And at the end of the year, all my notes that I took on here, they're just gonna be gone. When like years passed, when I took them on like paper, I'd keep those notebooks for math for the next years. And now like my AP psych notes and my Spanish notes, all my worksheets I did are on here, they're gone. Which for next year, for Spanish for kids, all their vocab sheets and all that, and they go back and look at that, they'll be there for them next year. And they will be deleted like this, everything on my iPad will be gone next year. So if they were to get a new iPad next year, then that wouldn't be there for them. I think it's another tool for them to have and look back at for them next year, cause I know it's frustrating when things get deleted and you don't have it.
And they've become accustomed to take, you know, they've got their own calendars, they're organizing their own life, using the iPads. Many districts do allow students to have them all summer. We know that many of our students will be taking summer school. It's, it's an opportunity for our kids. So that is the rationale for it. And most of them, as you can see from the damage reports and et cetera, our, our twelve, eleventh and twelfth graders are responsible kids. So that's why, since they've acted responsib- responsibly, we feel like we should give them that opportunity.
I think we came, I came away from the finance committee feeling that we should have a work session to review. And there was a PowerPoint included in our materials this week just to review technology and the implementation and concerns and questions that the board had going forward. And I think that would be an excellent idea, Richard, to do that at a work session.
Well, then, then with that, I'd like to table this.
I don't, I, I think this is for next fiscal year and I think the finance committee did support it in the end and we should proceed with it going forward. I think it is good to review the policies, but I think this should be in place for the next school year, we should implement it.
Maria, is there any issue? If we table this and talk about this at a work session in, 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 in bigger terms of the whole iPad, this and that type of thing? Does this hurt anything if we delay it till the May meeting or?
This, this amount, this could be tabled because we wouldn't implement it until August first. It's more just having that summertime to get the information out to families. So the fees part, the loan fee, the protection plan, that could be, that we could wait on that, cause it doesn't start until August first.
And before you table it, I just, from the board's perspective, we need to do some research then. Because obviously there are some questions that are unanswered. So can you give us some feedback on what questions you want us to answer as a result of having to table this and waiting another month?
Well, Chad brought up fees, should we be talking about more fees?
My understanding is that the finance committee approved the fees?
Yeah, I support their research. I mean, I feel like they've done research to other school districts and have similar plans.
And you saw all the numbers and, like, we aren't seeing like damages versus, did you see that in the finance?
No, I mean, I'm. They brought it up, they have not seen it.
No.
No.
So do you want data on damages?
Yeah, I would feel better. I, I'm kinda leery about forty dollars myself, if it's enough.
Possibly before and after we bought the cases, correct?
So we could do, let me just try to put this, if we figured out the difference between those amounts and then we checked the, I'm just trying to think of mathematically how we can get that. Then we can figure out what the difference is and then what those fees would have to be in order to cover that difference. Does that make sense for this year? This year, I think we're gonna have probably the maximum number of damages. Just makes sense, cause we're getting new cases. So if we use that number or that dollar amount and then try to figure that out, that might be a good way to start.
Because in business, you, you increase fees until that you, you know, come up with a solution. And then you wanna have those increased fees until you pay down the damages or whatever to break even or make a profit, whatever, and.
That's.
But we're not trying to do this, we're trying to be equitable with the students.
But maybe we should.
I just would hate to see this increase. Yeah, and I would just hate to see this increase again next year if we could, and it might still, even if we have this discussion.
Yeah, that's, I just, we're just looking for information. I don't, I don't not support, that's the right way of saying, you tabling it. But I just need to know what questions, because I don't wanna come to the next work session and do the same, have the same argument.
I mean, I think it's an equity issue. To me, we can't micromanage these details. To me, the work session, we would have to decide maybe sixth graders aren't gonna have iPads or something, you know what I'm saying? If people are concerned about, but I'm in support of tabling it if it works for the staff as well. But I think it's a bigger question than trying to micromanage, you know, the rate increases.
Right.
I, I do wanna share though that this is optional for families. So there is an option for them to participate or not participate. So there might be a concern if we make the fees too high, they will not participate and then we'll have more cost, you know, to repair the devices.
And what happens if they don't participate in those damages?
Right now, if they don't participate, then they are responsible for full costs. And we've only had a handful of families that did participate, you know, in the insurance program now.
Well, just like buying insurance, you are responsible for everything. I mean, that's just, that's a life out there.
Maria, do all insu, do all districts self-insure or is there any insurance that people buy through Apple or whoever else? You know, like a commercial insurance?
There is a third party company that will sell insurance to those families directly. But then the district has to pay them a certain fee to manage. There is a third party company that will sell insurance to those families directly, um, but then the district has to pay them a certain fee to manage all that. Um, but most districts are self insured.
You want us to look that one up too? 'Cause we get a dollar amount for that piece too.
Yes. Yeah.
There are some districts that don't charge any fees at all and absorb all the costs too, for various.
Colleen, um, to to clarify, um, so it it sounds like if the, the board is looking for a report on, on what the damages have been, probably broken down by grade, 'cause it sounds like there's a strong correlation there. And then I think I overheard you say that probably before and after the change in the cases too.
Yes.
Uh, is, and and when those changes happens, that we have a sense of what what's happened to the rate before and after too, 'cause, um, that's gonna be critical.
There is a drastic change with that, so it would be good for us to have that to show the information.
Yeah. Yeah, if there is, if it was a slight change or a dramatic change, that'd make a big difference in what we wanna do going forward as well, so, alright.
Okay, that gives us a good start. If you think of anything else, throw an email my way and then we'll, we'll put it on there, but that's great. I appreciate it, so, okay.
Alright.
So, we have to table it. You mean a motion?
Motion, in a second.
Yes, so we're in reference to the iPad loan agreement changes. I'm sensing a, uh, desire to table this and.
Table it, make a motion to table it.
Alright, motion made to table this item.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, motion and a second, table iPad loan agreement changes. All those in favor of tabling this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
What? I think we need a roll call.
Yes, you do, okay.
Six.
Okay, uh, Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Yeah.
Myself, aye. Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mister Chair passes five one.
Alright, this item will be tabled and we'll be looking for information at our May ninth work session. Alright, then that brings us to item eight B seven, Casper mobile device management software proposal. And I'd like to make it clear, there's no relationship.
You don't have financial interest in this.
I, how do we know that?
I I do have a presentation planned. Would you like me to present it or is that something you attend?
Well, we are.
Well, just like you did with fi- sorry, like you did with finance, what you said at finance.
I, there have been some questions raised and so whatever you would feel helpful and then we'll ask further questions, should there be some?
Well, I do have a presentation prepared. I'd like to go through it first time and then if there's any questions at the end, I can address anyone's questions.
That makes sense to me.
Maybe this will clarify a little bit, um, presentation.
Is this the, um, same item in our?
Yep. Okay, uh, just to give you an update, I'd like to give you an update on our, our flight plan, kinda reviews, next steps, and then go over the MDM proposal. So, if you, like I said, if you save your questions at the end, hopefully I'll answer them all and I'll answer any questions at the end. Just a review of our, our one to one plan, um, we implemented in August of twenty fifteen and we did a three year lease on the devices. And our one to one plan covers all students in grade six through twelve. We also implemented iPads at our elementary level, um, our K through two and our media have five iPads apiece and our, uh, grades three through five have seven iPads. And we use, currently use, uh, Meraki, which is our free, um, mobile device management system. Uh, just to some statements, when, uh, earlier in the fall, we did a survey with our staff and we found that eighty-five of our staff approved of the flight plan. Um, we also done, uh, same survey with our students and eighty-nine percent approved of the flight plan. And those statistics are still, um, pretty high right now. The staff are really, um, approving of the flight plan. And I'll show those in the survey in a minute. We, uh, did a technology survey in February. We've done this survey for the past few, three years now. And technology survey, um, is put on by Clarity, Breakbytes Corporation. It's a, a, a source that we outsourced to do the survey. It's completely anonymous. Um, we delivered the survey to all students in grades three through twelve. And we delivered it all to teaching staff and admin staff this year. And what the survey does is it measures technology, uh, changes and how it impacts learning in our district. And it's research based and what it does is it calculates what's called a case score. And case stands for classroom access, skills, and in, um, environmental. And each one of those areas has different variables underneath them and it gives you a case score based on all the areas and those variables. And we show a case score of ten sixty-six, which is considered proficient. You'll see there's a guide on the very top, whether you're beginning with technology, emerging, proficient, advanced. And so, as a general overall district score, we are proficient and then each level is is, um, measured separately. If you look at our trends, um, we we've, um, showed growth throughout the three years that we administrated the survey. So, we are moving in a positive direction. We did have, um, just percentage wise, this year we had sixty-five percent of our students participate and eighty-three percent of our staff participate. So, we are, uh, moving forward. We are showing growth, um, a little bit here. This shows you changes over time. And it shows you changes from last winter to this winter. And you see, we kinda show a little bit, bar graph show a little bit of growth in each area, but we made significant, um, growth in the skills area. We went from proficient to advanced. And the skills area, those, um, email skills, photo editing skills, multimedia skills, those hands on skills, that's what it covers when it talks about the skills. Uh, this is just another chart, just breaking down the trends, um, for each level and each domain area. Um, most of the slides that I'll show you are, are district related slides. We can break this down even further by building. We can break it down by grade level and we can also do comparisons with other Minnesota districts or national districts. And for the sake of time, I had to just choose a few slides to present to you tonight, but we can get a lot more information from this report. Um, one of our focuses this year was on, uh, teacher professional development. And, um, we did a lot of tech professional development with our early release times, um, our tech integrationists have done one to one support. We did a tech bootcamp last summer and we're doing another tech bootcamp this summer, so that's been a, a real focus for us. And if you can see from the slide here, the solids are this year's data and the stripes are last year's data. And it shows significant increase in in school sponsored professional development. You'll see everything will kinda swing to the left here and shows that, um, teachers are participating in more hours with professional development. Uh, another slide that I don't have on here, we also, um, evaluated non-school outside professional development. We saw increases in those areas also. So, um, it's really good, positive in that direction. Uh, another kinda area of celebration, we saw gains in other areas. Um, another focus this year was our digital citizenship. We had the, the SOAR program at the middle school, um, digital citizenship at the middle school. Um, our seventh and eighth grade technology class focuses a lot on, on online resources. Um, we've done, uh, Schoology courses, a badge course, um, the tech integrationists have done, um, presentations at our secondary school. So, we've done a lot of things to promote digital citizenship and proper uses of technology at our, at our one to one schools. Um, you can see we show a lot of, uh, some significant growth in different areas, um, again, moving in that positive direction and that forward upward direction. Online collaboration, uh, this year we really, uh, in, we implemented Schoology, which is our learning management system. And we, uh, implemented Google apps for education at all our sixth through twelfth grade students. And again, the solids are this year's information and the stripes are last year's information. You see a lot of progress moving in that direction where teachers are using more online collaboration tools and it's reflecting in the students. The students are using them also. So, again, another positive for our district. One of the questions I get asked a lot is, um, what is our wireless access for families at home? And, uh, right now, ninety-one percent of our families in our district have wireless access at home and then nine percent have the wire. And then what I did is I took it a step further and broke it down by the buildings to show you, um, the one to one schools and and the elementary schools as far as wireless access. So, a lot of our families are connected, are online all the time at home. It's a really good percentage. So, what have we learned so far from our, um, flight plan? Well, we learned that we need to continue professional development of, with our staff. We need to have them comfortable with technology, integrating technology, using that technology with students. It needs to be ongoing and, uh, ongoing all the time. Again, digital citizenship needs to be ongoing and needs to be integrated into the curriculum. We need to help students to make the right technology choices in every possible way. Um, one of our focus that we need to do is a little bit more with parent education. Um, that's gonna be our focus next, this coming year, working with community ed to offer parent classes. Um, we're, we're doing some open house planning this year to involve parents a little bit more. And there's been some suggestions to have hi- have an outside speaker come in to talk to families one to one, um, and put some more online resources for families. Another area we need to, we've learned is that we need to continue to support, um, technology resources and technology support. This has been a huge, huge, huge program in our district. It's involved a lot of people. It's involved my techs and my department. It's involved administrators and principals, tech integrationists, teachers. Everyone has been, um, involved in this program. So, it does take the support of everyone to, to make it successful. And we also need to keep up with the changes with technology. As you know as well as I do, technology changes at the drop of a hat. And so, we need to keep forward and keep growing as those changes happen. So, one of the changes we're requesting tonight is, uh, mobile device management system. And basically, all that is, is it's a software program used to secure and manage our devices. Um, it's, it's intent is to, um, improve functionality and secure the mobile devices in our district. Just a little history, um, our current MDM is called Meraki and it's a free system and we've had it in place for the past three years. We used it with our, um, pilot program when we did the pilot iPads in our buildings. We used it for the staff program when we rolled out iPads to staff and we used it to implement our one to one rollout. Um, and it, it met our needs at the time. It was fully featured. It was functional. It met all our demands. Um, and it allowed us to do all the things on the slide here. It allowed us to manage from a central location, inventory, distribute apps based on an Apple ID. Um, it gave us, um, it met the needs of our staff and students and it gave us time to also ha- analyze our flight plan. There's a lot of things, the one year makes a big difference and there's been a lot of tech changes in that one year. And that's forced us to evaluate our MDM and and evaluate our needs a little bit more. Um, our current MDM really needs to, needs to change with the current technology. So, we listened to our stakeholders. We listened to, um, uh, we looked at the changes of the latest Apple iOS and we began evaluating our current MDM. Um, we didn't find out until, uh, just last September that our current MDM doesn't support the latest iOS nine point three point one, all the new features that came with that latest, uh, release. We found out late in September that there, our current MDM didn't support it. So, that's when we started evaluating different sources and and looking to expand. So, again, why do we need a new MDM? Because the changing policies, uh, with changing technology. Our current MDM is a free version and we're very limited with that free version. We can't implement all the latest bells and whistles with the iOS nine point three. Um, there, there's a different way that we, the new, uh, software pushes out apps. Um, there's some integration with the classroom that the new version has. Technical support, we have absolutely no technical support with our current version, which is, um, really a big deal when you're talking about software support and that ninety-nine percent of the time. One of the new features of the MDM is it integrates with Active Directory and our student management system. It allows us to group devices based on, um, groups in our district. So, we can group devices based on the grade level, based on the building. Right now, everything is all in one group. There's no integration with our Active Directory and no integration with our student management system. Um, we have no ability to clear restriction codes. A lot of times, parents will set restriction codes. We can't override those restriction codes, so we can't set, um, install educational apps that a teacher has requested for a group or a grade level. And again, the whole improvement of the app management that you get with a new MDM, we just, we just don't have those capabilities right now with our free version. So, some current challenges that we're facing now, we have received comments from staff and from students that, um, the iPads are disruptive to learning. They are. We do have, uh, the App Store open right now, so students are allowed to download any app that they choose to. And some of that has been a disruption, um, if the student chooses to download an app that's not educational. Um, staff do not have the access to clear student lock codes. Right now, with the new MDM, you're able to designate certain rights in, um, different areas. So, we can, with the new, the MDM, we can allow the teacher to clear some of these lock codes. Right now, the student has to come to the tech office, tech office has to unlock it, student has to go back to class. So, they're losing that instructional time every time they have to leave class. Um, I talked about the parent restrictions and then there's no way to, to prevent students from using unauthorized apps or downloading from the website, for example, an app from the website. So, what have we done? Um, we've done some evaluations over the past few months. We, we've had some vendor presentations, committee discussions. We've gotten some feedback from our staff and from our students. Um, we've evaluated hands on a mobile device. And we had conversations with other school districts that have implemented the one to one initiative. So, based on all those resources, we are, um, recommending that, uh, jam Casper software, um, be implemented in our district. This is, um, a very popular MDM. A lot of the big one to one schools are using it. Uh, Northfield, Farmington, Minnetonka, St. Paul, Rochester, Spring Lake, Park Park, all of them use Casper as an MDM. It's, it's known for their really good tech support and it's got a lot of features that I think would benefit us. So, again, the new MDM feature specifics, one of the nice s- feature specifics is we can set up what's called a self-service app store. So, we can put all the apps that the district chooses in a store and those would be the only store that the students can download the app. So, the app store in itself would be disabled, the students would be able to choose apps based on what the district decides in this menu option. Um, it works with the app store removed, which is a key, key piece. Right now, when we have to push out an app, it requires user intervention. So, the student has to type in their Apple ID, know their password, download the app and get it installed. With this new MDM, there's, there's no app store. We just push it out at, right out. It's, it's sent to the device itself. Again, filtering it by course level. Right now, if we need to purchase an app, we have to purchase two thousand copies 'cause we can't decipher whose iPad is whose, um, based on grade level. With, with having this in, in place, we can actually distribute an app just to the middle school, for example, or just to eighth grade or just to students in an eighth grade technology course. You know, we can save the district money by only buying what we need in the apps and distributing it that way. Um, updates, right now, uh, we, with this system, you can lock down when the, when the iOS updates come out. A lot of times, the update comes out and, um, students will download it right away and, you know, a few weeks la- later, an update comes out. Well, this gives us an opportunity to test the update and not allow the students to update until we know it's working and it's functional and we can just push it out. Um, and then some other things, but the one thing I do wanna stress though, no matter what MDM we choose, we cannot filter every choice a student makes. When the student takes the device home and they connect to their home wifi, we do not have any more control at, at that point. We can only control what's here at, at our school district. And, you know, nothing is, um, the magic potion. I mean, kids are smart nowadays. They're smarter than I am and they figure out things and they work around things. But we can do this to hopefully minimize, um, as much as we can. It, it's a full time job. If you were to monitor it constantly, it'd be a full time job. So, this is our attempt to provide support to our students, support to our parents and support to our staff as much as possible. So, cost recommendations, um, right now, Casper does pay, uh, charge you by device. Um, it's a fifteen hundred dollar one time setup fee and we're asking that that come out of technology funds this year. And then the thirty-five thousand would be per year for about thirty-five hundred devices. And the company has worked with me and allowed us to, um, if we do go with Casper, we can implement this prior to the July one day and we can implement the licensing starting July one. So, we can install the software, get it ready to go and then pay for the licensing starting July one. Again, uh, lastly, those are all the features we get and ultimately, the goal is to, it's a resource needed to continue to grow our flight plan. Again, I, we're at the, the very end of being able to support the, like, the devices with a free system. Free system will only get you, um, so much, but with all the latest changes in technology, we just, um, we can't implement the latest changes without a paid version. It's just limiting at that point. And we wanna support our, our, our devices, but we also wanna support our students, keep them on task in the classroom, um, and focused on the curriculum. um and focused on the curriculum. We want to support our parents. We want to support our teachers and try to maximize the learning time for students. And we want to support our administration. We want to minimize the disciplinary issues that have come up with students making poor technology choices. So, timeline wise, um, we have a busy summer ahead of us, um, but we're requesting that this be purchased and implemented in May. And there's several reasons. It gives us time to set up the software, but it also gives us time to implement the software with our, our staff. We have three hundred and sixty-two staff that we need to update the software. And we need, it requires us to wipe the device completely and then install the new MDM. So, we'd like to get this implemented uh sooner so that we can have staff ready to go before they leave for the summer and they can still use their iPads. We like to have it ready so that we can update the eleventh grade iPads before they leave for the summer. And again, the summer school and summer steam program iPads. So, that's, that's our goal. And then in July, we are looking to work on the elementary ones. In August is preparation for our incoming sixth graders, our, our roll, rollout and orientation for that. And then in September, we would do the remaining seventh through twelfth graders. We do kind of a modified first day of school to, to get that implemented. And just some final thoughts and, and just some future career considerations. Um, just like technology, five years is pretty old for technology. Uh, our, our kindergarten and first graders right now have iPad twos, which are getting slower and slower and slower. And we anticipate with the next release, um, they won't be able to be supported in the next release. So, we're thinking maybe one more school year, we can get by with them and then we'll have to think about something else. Um, and then just a reminder, we have one more year left on the teacher iPads. They come due next summer. And then two more years on the student iPads. So, I know I covered a lot of information, um, and I'm having to open to any questions that you may have.
Um, Maria, uh, one of the concerns that I've heard from, from teachers is, is they'll get onto an iPad with a student and they'll notice that the student has some apps in the back. They might be on the right app and ready to do the, wanting, you know, ready to do the right work on it. Um, but there's push notifications are coming in and, and they've talked about there's times they've been sitting on a student's iPad and every twenty seconds, another notification is coming in from some app or, or, or from texting or messaging coming out from other things. So, it's, it's, e- even if that student at the moment is well-intentioned, uh, the, the iPad is set up in such a way uh with these push notifications to, to interrupt their, their attempts to do their work. So, on, you know, on my phone, I just turn those off for that exact reason because I don't want to get bothered by Facebook updates every time somebody posts something. Um, is there a way to control that with the MDM?
I'll have to research that a little bit. We did meet, the tech integrationists did meet with uh secondary school students and that was one of the focuses of the meeting. They had the kids bring their iPads and say, okay, kids, I want you to shut off all these notifications except I think it was Schoology and Google were the la- the only two we allowed. So, that's more just showing the kids, they can turn it off. I mean, we, they have that option right now. It's just a matter of showing them how to do it.
So, Maria, piggybacking on Jason's comments. Does this MDM have the capability to say, at seven-thirty, every iPad in the district can be shut off of Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, and at three-thirty can be turned back on when they go back home? Can we shut it off so that when they go home on their own home network, they can do whatever they want, right? Because it's a device and they're on your network. But when they're on our network at the school, can we absolutely shut all of that down so that see his push notifications can't be done, so that when they're, you know what I mean? So, they just can't be on that during the day?
So, shut down like Facebook during the day or shut down the?
Facebook, a- any social media thing, we don't want them on. I mean, no different than, would that be considered an app? You know what I mean? That we can shut it off from seven-thirty to three-thirty type of thing?
If we had this MDM in place, then we would ban, for example, a Facebook app. But we can shut it off through our filtering system. So, if we wanted the student to use Facebook during the day, we can do it through the web filter and through the MDM. But when you have an app, it's a little bit more difficult to control. So, if we had this in place and the student needed to use Facebook, we would allow it or disallow it depending on what the district decide through the web browser. Which they could still access the data through the web browser.
So, I'm sorry, are you telling me, yes, we can block social media during the day if we wanted to, or are you telling me, no, we can't?
It depends on, on the app. It depends on what it is exactly. Um, it depends on the app's specifics.
So, it sounds like we could block the app altogether if we want. Probably not for certain parts of the day. But we could, for instance, block the Facebook app. And then we could block Facebook or not block Facebook through the internet, which they can, uh, because they could get Facebook through an app and they can also get it through a web browser. So, we could just choose to not let them install the app if we wanted to.
We would choose not to let them install the app and they would just get it through the browser if we allowed it in our district.
If we wanted to, then we could control whether or not they get it through the browser. There's some control.
But when they go home, they would have full access to it, yes.
But can you still, uh, sorry, I'm not on it, but can you still go to instagram.com and snapchat.com through the web browser and still do all that? Just?
They should, that's blocked through the school wifi, so no.
In, yeah, Instagram and, and Snapchat are just apps right now. That's my understanding. They're just apps.
They are.
So, we'd have to block the entire app.
Why would you need Facebook during school time? Jenna?
It depends. There are some educational benefits to social media. There are some educational benefits to social media. Um, that, that you can use. We use Facebook as a communication tool in our district right now. Um, so s- students access Facebook to get information about our district.
Yeah, these are not all negative things, like, my, you know, my robotics team is posting about the ongoings of the robotics team all the time on those. And I think that's a fantastic thing. It's a, it's a great use of it. Uh, I just don't want them getting notices on even my robotics team twenty times during their, that's the challenge, is it can also be abused really easily. But it's, it's not that, it's not, there's not positives there. I, I think there are. It's just tough to, to separate out the positive from the negative in those social media apps in particular.
And, you know, you talk about Snapchat too. Snapchat is really a positive communication tool. It's just how it's being used. You know, there's sometimes it's used positively and sometimes negatively, but you just gotta, with anything, it's just appropriate uses of technology.
I thought when we brought this program, it was a hundred percent controlled. And we had lively discussion at finance that, that it's not a hundred percent controlled by, you know, you or, you know, technology and staff.
It was fully functional at the time when we bought it. Um, but there was also consensus from our district to not apply restrictions. Our, this was a new program for us and our teachers wanted the students to have the ability to download apps in their classrooms at any time. So, it, we really um didn't approach this with restricting right off the, at the start. We could have taken the App Store away completely, um, but that was just not the consensus at the time.
Because again, with the App Store, you have a lot of the educational apps would be bound to that store.
And this was a time where teachers were still kind of experimenting with that and experimenting with different apps in the classroom. And a lot of the features um that I've explained in the MDM just was, were not, was not present at the time. There was a, a whitelist. You could have whitelist the uh certain apps. But that required turning the App Store on, downloading the app and then turning it off again. So, you still have that window where a student could download another app.
Just out of curiosity, when the kids have their own iPads and their own iPhones in the summer, do they have restrictions from their parents for accessing all those apps? Just philosophically, aren't we supposed to be replicating what society is doing right now? Well, we re- sometimes when, just educationally, philosophically, we do, if we're restricting some of these things um, and the kids have this, this more of this open air way to access these programs during the summer, why are we limiting, limiting that in, within our school? Because they're gonna be out in the real world right now with their personal devices accessing these things. I, there should be more, what I'm getting at, maybe we should be focusing on citizenship, digital citizenship, rather than restrictions. So.
And that, that is, what Todd is explaining is what many districts are doing is that they're, they're leaving these open and they're tr- you know, they're teaching our kids, you know, what's appropriate, what's appropriate use of technology, when can you use what? Um, those are the conversations that are, that they're having. They're not blocking, I mean, I could speak to Lakeville. They, they're not blocking these, these sites. They'll block the ones, you know, seventeen and above obviously, but not necessarily are they blocking Snapchat and Facebook. It's not.
Colleen and Maria, does our staff, do our teachers at the middle school and high school, do they, do they ever um speak out about all these, you know, social media things being open and do they ever say, we wish they weren't, or they, they like them open or I'm just, what's their feedback of a classroom teacher?
It varies. It varies on, on the teacher right now. I know the middle school has um placed restrictions on certain iPads based on report card or based on grades because of the distractions in class, but um I think it varies by teacher.
Yeah, if you were, if you, if you were to ask the staff, you'd have two sides.
But not, not overwhelmingly one side or the other?
You know, at this point, I think, um, I think the, uh, middle school, I'll look back. I think the middle school is looking at the, would like the possibility of using it and the app to block the games during the school day and, and some of the other apps. At the high school, just doesn't seem to be as of great as a deal that I'm aware of. But, um, you know, I think they like that option.
When you say games, explain that.
Well, there are educational games and there are other games.
Well, okay, then, there's non-educational.
So, so let's talk about a game like Minecraft. Minecraft is, you know, a game in which you learn, you learn shapes and you build things and et cetera. Has some educational value, but at the same time, when you're playing Minecraft in the middle of, you know, language arts class, might not have any value to that class. And so, you know, it depends upon what game they're playing and how, how do you feel about it.
Kind of like when we were in high school and played tic-tac-toe or we played that dot game where you colored the squares and the X's. You know, it's a different device. It, it replaces what we did a long time ago. So, that's, you gotta keep that in mind too. We had our little things when we were in high school too. This is just another way that some of these kids divert that attention.
I think that's mad at this point, would just like to have that, that they want to use the MDM so that they can either control what page they're on on their iPad or what they want to shut down during their class time. I believe that's what you're asking for at this point.
Now, these students, the finance, these students are very good. And, very good. And some are very, very good. So, they get around all this. They, right, through all your security and whatever, so they get into something they shouldn't. Then what happens to that student?
We, we are able to filter based on maturity level, so right now, they cannot, no matter what, download an app that's considered seventeen or above. Um, our, our, like, I think our app, um, content filtering is twelve and above. So, depending on any maturity level, no, they cannot get into.
Can, can I just have you do one example too, Colleen, that you and I talked about, using names of course with this. But here's a situation where we have a, we, we monitor the communication that goes on between these iPads. You remember the, the young lady that was considering suicide? And we were able to catch that discussion through that whole social media piece and able to address that situation. So, there are some things that we can catch as a result of that. Um, I don't know if they would have caught that had that not been within the school system and had we had everything blocked.
So, we have a human monitoring system so that if they use our devices and they are bullying each other, they're talking about an upcoming fight, um, with life, and the message is sent to us.
Is there keywords?
Yep.
Oh, there is keywords like kill, murder, fight, suicide.
Suicide, fight. Yep, send that out.
Blowing, crying, yeah.
And we're looking at this MDM not for restrictions or taking the App Store away or not taking the App Store. We're looking at for more customization, so we have that flexibility. If we wanted to have a different policy at the high school versus the middle school, for example, we'll be able to do that customization where we can't do that right now with our MDM. If we want to leave everything open, that's still a possibility. Or if we wanted to restrict it to a certain grade level, we can do that with the new MDM where we can't right now. So, it's more for customization also.
Now, this new program, when did this come into existence?
When did it come into?
Yeah, when did they develop it?
Uh, I, I want to say twenty thirteen or. It's been, it's been revised and revised over the years, but it's been around for two, three years.
Because you know, like with, like iPhone, they come out about every two weeks with a different one. And, and then you gotta go, what, pay four hundred dollars for it, you sell the other one for two hundred and I, I don't want to get into that, like here's a program that's got more bells and whistles and we're dumping this, we're paying that.
With all due respect, Richard, if you don't want to get into that, then we should just give it a nod. That's the game.
Like, like Gary Lozark says, at every finance committee, technology costs are only going up. You are addicted to it and you're only going up.
I think too, you want to.
But then he was in favor of this. Yeah, yes, because he understood that we need to make these moves. Yes.
Well, and I just wanted to comment too about the vision that we had. We want this, I, I'm assuming we still want to be the best in the big nine, the best in the state, the best in the nation when it comes to technology because we want the highest, we want the highest caliber program that we can offer. And changes do occur. And if you don't keep up with the changes, sometimes that does fall backwards. And you found that out when you guys back in, when did we have, we were one, Tom always refers, we had one of the best technology programs in the big nine at one time. And then what happened when we kind of forgot about those different things? Gradually, it takes it away and you start losing ground on those things. Um, Maria and Colleen worked diligently on how to improve the school district. We're not trying to make it worse. And by doing some of these things, we're trying to make things, and, and these were not suggestions from them, by the way. We had a couple of board members that were feeding us this information and we thought it was a good idea. So, that's why we're researching this and bringing this back to you. I will say though, if, I'm okay either way, just to be brutally honest, I like the idea of being open. But I also like the idea of allowing some of our teachers be in control of some of the software that's on that, that piece.
But Todd, I think no matter what, something has to be done over the free version.
Right.
I mean, something has to be done versus where we're at.
We cannot support the current latest iOS with this version. We have to go with a paid version. And this is the solution that we chose as the best one right now.
The, in, in this, if you, if there's something else better on the market, we're up to thirty-five thousand, ten dollars per device in the fifteen hundred, right? So, next year, you could change to something else if you see something else better.
We could. Yeah, it'd be a lot of work.
No, no, but I'm, I'm, I'm just saying you're not locked into this for three years or anything like that.
No, and then actually, actually, the price goes down, believe it or not, the more devices you buy.
Sure.
So, if we expanded our fleet, the price would go down.
But I mean, there's no doubt, something will surpass this. I mean, so I, I'm just curious if you're locked into it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this, this item after hearing the presentation. I, I think the flexibility it gives us to pursue lots of avenues strikes me as the direction we want to go. So, I'm gonna move approve it.
Before there's a second, I'm, and maybe I'm, if I'm being inappropriate, um, Robert Thrills, please let me know. We have invested a significant amount of resources into technology. And as you indicate, and as became clear in nineteen eighty-one when I was a computer coordinator, um, the cost only goes up, although pretty, we used to pay twenty-five hundred dollars for a desktop as a recording. Uh, anyway, having invested and we, and the need for continual investment, I think is obvious and I don't, if we're gonna argue against that, we're, I don't know, not being um realistic for me to say that, so. But what I'm, I guess the point I'm trying to get to is that after the investment that we've made about, after the staff development that has been done, after the, all this work of, of trying to establish an infrastructure that will support this um aspect in school, I am awaiting some detailed description of the difference that it's making. Uh, there were a couple of comments quoted in the, in the PowerPoint. But I would be interested in knowing specifically from a variety of, 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 I think teachers might be the most appropriate one to, to give me this kind of testimony. But um, how is it better for our students? That we have made this investment, that we continue to try to maintain and sustain this kind of uh program? I'll reach back, way back into the dark ages. Uh, there's, there are many years where I wished we could have had a one-on-one kind of setup, particularly to improve the writing of my eighth and ninth graders. Um, I, the times that I was able to have them write in one, the, one of the small computer labs that we had, uh, I could see a profound difference because the primary benefit of writing on a computer is the ability to revise without having to copy it over word for word. Now, I'm assuming that writing hasn't gone away altogether. And uh, I'd like to notice, find out what difference it's making. Who's, who's doing writing? Are we doing more writing? Is, is the writing getting better? The same thing could apply to, to every subject area. So, I recognize the, the need and the, the tremendous effort that's been re- So, I recognize the, the need and the tremendous effort that's been required to develop and, and try to implement this one-on-one project. But I would like to get some continuous feedback on the difference that it's making for our students.
I would also like to...
Point of order, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, but, but a motion was made? It either, it either needs a second or, or not. I think before, I, there can be conversation after the motion is made, but, but I think we need to finish the motion. More conversation, it certainly happened, I don't want to interrupt that.
No, alright.
Absolutely.
So, let's try and get us, uh, procedurally back on track. There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
I second, I second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I think, I didn't mean to interrupt, I think I only wanted to say something.
No, I think you, you were absolutely right to keep us on track.
I think the, the teaching staff would be a great resource, but I'd also like to bring these students because I think our students should, should speak to us. Probably I have, you know, genius in these schools. Probably our best resource in them.
We may need a retreat, right, versus just a work session to review technology.
What's the difference?
I think three hours. It's an extra three hours.
Well, looking back on, on the last, just the last year, we've added three technicians, we added two, uh, instructio, and integrationists. Um, those are certainly, and we've, we've invested in, in hardware, um, we're looking at more software here. What is that all producing for us, I guess is what I'm asking for. I, I have no doubt that it is making a difference, but your list of, of challenges is, is there and I think I'd like to hear the, the different, the positive difference that it's making as well from those that are using it on a day-to-day basis. So, any further comments?
Just one other about, just talking about that, cause I, I think one thing we could do that might make it easier instead of having a retreat is to put those celebrations on the website. And so that you have access to those, so we can get reports on a daily, weekly basis. So, you guys can take the initiative, go to the website, we'll put maybe technology celebrations and we'll just have the teachers make comments in there, and then you'll be able to see it live.
Well, and, and to the, to an extent, if that could be interactive.
Yep.
See, if somebody is celebrating something, it would be nice to have some, a chance to ask them some questions. Can you elaborate on this? What were the difficulties in doing this? How could we make it better for next time? To have the interaction.
I do like to share, we, we're very involved in Twitter. So, if you go to our hashtag, EdShare six five six, you'll see teachers posting positive things that they're doing in class. So, EdShare six five six is one of the hashtags that we're using that showcase teachers using, um, technology.
I would say Facebook at the middle school has done a tremendous job of showing and showcasing all of what they've done, um, for those things. Um, so I just, we're just trying to figure out an avenue that you guys can access this. Because we're doing it, we're just not doing it at a retreat. Um, so if there's a better way for us to get that information to you, we'd be more than happy to send that or have that conversation. You're certainly always welcome to email or call a teacher too.
Well, having, having been away from the, the day-to-day use of technology, uh, for eight years now, I'd like a Twitter insight as well.
Board, board education is...
Jen, Jenican teaches how to access all that information.
That would be great, and that would be wonderful. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion or questions?
I just completely lost, but, you know, we've, this is, we haven't completed the first year with the students, right? We're about to complete. And again, I thought we had a secure site. I thought we had up-to-date software. Now, we're told that we're not.
We did, it just, things changed so quickly.
I know, I know, that's what was discussed here that... Then all of a sudden, next year, you'd be another program at, you know, sixty thousand a year. But we need that, you know? To me, it's, I was gonna table this to bring it to a work session, but there's already a motion on the table. But, yeah, I'll be voting no on this.
Alright, well, um, we have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion seems to be at an end. All those in favor of, uh, item eight, B seven, the Casper Mobile Device Management Software Proposal, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
No.
Need a roll call, please.
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, no. Uh, Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
It passes five one, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Alright, and item eight, B eight is the point seven-two FTE, Technology Clerical Support Position Proposal. And I will attempt a summary, is that, um, this is a continuation of a position that we approved last year. It is actually a slight reduction in time. And that this, uh, sec, it is a secretary, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, um, would be involved in, uh, in doing the duties that had for a while fallen onto our business department and who already had a quite full plate. But iPad Service Management Orders Inventory Documentation Management Collection and Distribution of Devices, Coordination with Technology Integration Specialists and so on, Financial Support for Fees Payments Repairs Fee Collection, the item we dealt with a little while ago, and Setup of Devices After Repair. So, this is, this position represents a continuation of a position that we currently have in place, but was only in place for one year. Sir?
Would this be for another one year or is this now?
That is a very good question.
Is this proposal to kind of be in the...
Yeah, since we have the financing for it and the financing would be continuous, we would suggest that we would, uh, continue this until, I mean, until we have to do something else, so... But for now, with the operating capital dollars only increasing and, um, we continue to get that resource from the, the buildings and near strand and so on, there's no reason why we can't make it continuous.
Where does, where does the operating capital technology money?
Yeah, I'll start.
Right, it comes out of that pool, but really, where's that pool, I guess, I don't know, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, I'll let you, go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure I understand your question.
The operating capital technology, that, is that a separate basket that thirty-two thousand?
No, operating capital is its own fund. And there are lots of rules about what you can do with operating capital set in legislation. And one of the things that is allowed by legislation to be spent out of that one fund is to support technology. You can support it by, by, uh, hiring staff or paying for software or paying for hardware. Because, I don't know, you know, twenty years ago when technology started to invade schools, there was just not enough resources around that and there's a lot of push at the legislative level to fund technology. And they said, well, we can't fund it, but we'll open up the restrictions and operating capital to allow you to use those funds to pay for technology. So, currently, we do fund about two technicians out of the operating capital fund. And with the increase in the long-term facilities maintenance revenue, that money coming in over the next three years will grow to about one point six million. Um, we feel like we can support this technology cost out of operating capital going forward.
Sorry, just the way it's worded in here, it says operating capital technology, sorry.
That's okay, it's a little complicated, that's a good question.
Thanks.
I think the other thing, just, uh, um, even going into the future, there's still enough, um, allocation that we can utilize in that operating capital to even offset two other salaries that would free up even more general fund dollars. We don't want to do that now because we're running a little bit low on the operating capital, want to build that up. But for coming years, we could essentially save almost a hundred thousand dollars because of the, because of the long-term facilities maintenance piece that, that we brought to MSBA and that we proposed, we didn't, the legislature proposed and passed last year. So, there are some good things that are happening as a result of that long-term facilities thing that we didn't even realize till now, so...
Ripple of facts.
Yep, the good positive things.
Am I correct in viewing this, uh, clerical support as not being in competition or affecting, uh, other instructional type positions staff? This is purely, uh, related to the, uh, capital in technology?
Yes.
Well, and we're also, is there, is there something else that offset that too? I think that Maria had helped out.
The fourteen thousand in tech equity aid, which we've never earmarked for anything. And then Near Strand is staying on, um, some of our system technology stuff within the district. And so, they've agreed to reimburse us for the cost of some of that technology. So, they don't have to go out and invest in their own technology. And so, that's about four thousand dollars a year that we'll be billing them, and that's new.
From your perspective, um, this position has relieved the pressure that was on the...
Oh, absolutely.
Business, uh, department, not, business office.
Absolutely, and of course, you know, with all the changes that will be happening come September one, we want to be sure that we don't cut anybody short in that area too because they'll, it'll, they'll need their time to get up to speed with two new people coming into some key positions, so...
Alright, how's this, uh, position be filled?
Um, that's, can I, can I bring Nicole up for that one? Cause it's...
Yeah, you can bring anybody.
We're talking about the position and the process that will go about filling it because it was a one-year position. Uh, we'll open it up and I think I want to make sure I get the system, are the, the steps right, so I'm gonna have Nicole address that.
Good evening. So, um, if the position is approved by the board, then we will go through the procedures to post the position. It is, um, part of our clerical bargaining unit, um, which means it will need to be posted internally and externally for five days. And then we will go through, um, ex, or internal candidates first, if any apply. And if, uh, we do not have any internal candidates, we'll, we will look at the external candidates.
So, they have to know something about technology.
Um...
Sort of?
Sort of, it's a union position, so internal candidates would have rights first, it would be, um, based on seniority.
It's primarily a clerical position, I understand it. I mean, obviously, we're going to be able to learn about the iPads, but I think you're, it's more of a clerical position than technical.
These are clerical duties, so they're easily trained.
Yes, um, we have two different categories of our clerical staff and, um, this particular category district-wide, they all have very similar skills necessary to do the positions.
So, they don't need the, the programming like Maria, no?
Correct.
So, they're not gonna be working with the teachers or students or nothing, but that just, no...
Mr. Chair, I'll, uh, move for approval on this position.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the point seven-two full-time equivalent Technology Clerical Support Position. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And that brings us to eight, B eleven, Traversa Transportation Software.
Uh, nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Nine, Construction Finance Reports. And, this one is up here, is it?
This says an action item on it, is there a motion that needs to be made here or is this just a report?
It does say an action item.
It's not, I think it's just a report, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I think we, yeah.
Last month, there was a report in May afternoon, so I, I did it as an action item.
Because there were change orders, were there any change orders this time? No, so that's probably why.
Oh.
It's supposed to be a report, sorry.
Alright.
Okay.
I was trying to figure out what motion I should make, but I didn't know, that's why I was confused.
Are you making motions?
Do we have a page number?
The, if you want, I think the one thing that people look at is the contingency fund and you can see that we still have a good balance.
I, we have a, uh, construction meeting this Thursday.
Yep.
Three o'clock?
Three, yes.
Or something similar to that.
Yep.
Um, I'm a little concerned with the completion of District Office.
Oh.
So, you know, exactly...
Yep, we, um, we followed the timelines, I was just at the meeting a week ago and everything was right on schedule. They were behind a little bit on the outside, but now everything is being completed on the inside. Um, the, I'm kind of doing the facility report right now a little bit, but that's fine. The inside, they're finishing up their taping and sanding and they'll be painting probably next week and then really the floors are going to be going in there pretty quickly. So, it's actually what they delayed on the outside, they were able to pick up on the inside and so things pretty much evened out. But we're still, we're looking at, we, in fact, we scheduled, um, June seventh would be our move-in date at the DL. And I was at that meeting and the contract was all agreed that they would be ready. And we'd have the occup, occupying permit and everything.
You might want to tell the board about the District, about the brick.
Yep, and the brick...
They have, they have no idea how to lay brick.
Yeah, they had to, and they, on their dollar, they had to hire their own special supervisor to watch them do the, the brick laying. And we did have some issues with that. And we asked them to tear the brick down and then start over again, and they did do that, but that was on their own expense.
That was at the DL.
That was at the DL, only at the DL, that's correct. Yep, but that did set us back outside, but, um, because we were able to keep on, actually, we made pretty good progress on the inside, it's gonna even out, and we're pretty much done with the break down, so... Yep.
Alright. Well, any further questions? Alright, and I believe that can end our report. Now, having tabled item ten, we'll move on to item eleven, uh, Traversa Transportation Software. We were briefed on this, I believe, at the work session? No?
Finance.
Finance, okay, alright. Are there any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Let's go.
I'm assuming I'll need to...
Yeah.
This is a different plan, I think Colleen explained it in the letter, that she is proposing a different software than was proposed at the Finance Committee. And the matter was actually tabled at the Finance Committee to look into funding the software, original request. So, this is a new request.
Yep.
For different, a new software, same idea, but new software.
Actually, when we started looking at transportation software, and I don't know if it was clear in the memo or not, but the transportation system, the, the Versatran that we recommended to the Finance Committee and the Traversa that we're now recommending are both products that are provided by the same company. The Versatran is a very longstanding, very stable product, but it's a little bit old technology. So, we've had a lot of talk about technology tonight, how things change. Traversa, the way they described it to us is that, um, Versatrans is about a forty-year-old adult. Traversa is their movement to go into the next phase of technology and they need to really do away with Versatrans because it is old technology, it's very costly. Traversa is a seventeen-year-old teenager, basically. So, when you think about terms of age and level of maturity and where the products are at, it's a little bit younger, doesn't have all the bells and whistles, but it's fully, fully functional. When we've met and got both presentations, one of, we, we were trying to find something that would work for both of us because we each have our own system. Busware works for Fairable Transportation, our contractor. Um, our edulog doesn't really work for us when we were struggling with finding, um, it to keep up with what we needed to do for tracking of students and the way that the state requires us to report their transportation code and, you know, bus numbers and all those kinds of things. So, it really was a push more from our end than from Fairable Transportation's end. But as we were looking at the software, it just made sense for us to both be on the same software so that we've got the same information in one system. Um, when we saw both Versatran and Traversa, there was more concern on the contractor's part that maybe Versatran was more stable, more likely to be the product we should start with, knowing that in two to three years, we'd probably end up having to move to Traver, to Traversa anyway because what they were telling us is that Versatran would eventually go away. So, we wanted the transportation company to be most comfortable with what we were doing because either one of those products would work for us. When we got to the Finance Committee, there was some concern about the cost and rightfully so. It was a little, it was very expensive to buy into this product. So, they wanted us to table it until May and then, um, have some discussions with Fairable Transportation. So, a couple of things there. Um, we can't really delay the decision until May because they need to get going on routing and that would be too late for us to get it implemented and get the routing started for next year. So, if we decide not to do it tonight, it would have to wait probably another year then. Um, and the other points that I made in there are, um, I feel a little uncomfortable asking a contractor to pay for this, because we don't ask any other contractor to pay for software that the school district owns and supports. So, that was my hesitation with asking them to pay for it. So we went back, I went back to the transportation company and asked them to take another look at Traversa, because we were comfortable with what it could do for us, but I wanted them to be comfortable with what it could do for them. So, um, they did some investigating, and I think they're very comfortable now after talking with seven other districts that are using it, that it will meet their needs, and so the cost is a lot less. The initial cost is, um, will be made up over the difference in what we're paying now for Edulog over probably a period of three years. So financially, it makes a lot more sense to do, move in the Traversa direction, because it will save us money in the long run.
Does Garrett have an opportunity to come up?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, um, I don't know if there are any questions, or if you'd like me to just?
I used to speak to the idea moving forward with new software and how it benefits.
He, yeah, I think the discussion started, um, quite a few months ago, um, when, um, Colleen and I talked a little bit about, um, Edulog and the services that Edulog is providing to the district. Um, I have seen other districts moving away from Edulog for their routing. Um, the boundary, um, change that we just went through, um, Edulog kinda lagged a little bit behind it, um, something that Versatran, or Traversa would be able to help with, a little bit, uh, more efficiently. Um, the state reporting, um, that, uh, Colleen had mentioned as well. See, our system, we use Busware, it's called, and that's fully functional for our needs, um, but, um, it, it benefits the district, obviously, for us to put essentially our routes into the same system, so that, um, the district is able to see the reports and understand exactly what's going on out on the roads and the buses. Um, also the, um, uh, yeah, I guess that would be the biggest, um, thing there, would be the, um, state reporting. Um, there's another thing I was gonna mention, but it slipped my mind here, so.
If a student is lost, or is on a bus somewhere, this would be a quicker method, is that right? That was discussed at the Finance Committee, I think, in trying to locate a student.
No, it's the EL active right away.
Not that we want that to happen on.
How do you locate a student? I mean, how, but, how do you do that?
We have two-way radios that would call the, the, each, um, bus with, um, so if a, a parent calls and asks, you know, or says their student hasn't been off the bus yet at a certain time, we would page that certain bus that they should be on, and sometimes it takes a little bit, cause students either don't hear or they're scared, they think they're in trouble, so they don't come up to the bu- the front of the bus straight away. But when our bus is emptied out, they, the drivers see, um, students in there, and either it's an unknown face, or it's a face that just forgot to get off at, at a certain stop, so.
Maybe I'm gonna explain this, right, but the stat, school staff would be able to see that more quickly when we incorporate this program, rather than having a phone, a couple of phone calls to figure that out, is what I was trying to get at.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Right. That was the point that slipped my mind, was the fact that in, it ties in with Infant Campus, so that a secretary, for instance, if a student came, a new student came to the office after school and said, you know, what, what route do I get on, you know, they, they can certainly call us now, and we provide that information, but it's a little bit quicker to, um, have that as the goal, to just pull up on Infant Campus, um, which ties into the system, um, and they can provide the information to the student, so that was another, um, desire that the district had, so.
And I know that the software, they, um, also talked about, we don't have GPS functioning equipment yet, but, um, I think there, there's maybe two steps to this, I wasn't quite clear on that, but there isn't a, the ability with this software to be able to track where the bus is at every second of its route. So you know exactly what stops it's making, how long it's taking, if they're veering off course, you can tell that, so there's, there are some really nice features in this, of course, we'd have to add some GPS to it, but.
Or you can just give them all a cellphone, cause you can do your.
Yeah.
Tracking with that.
Yeah, three-fourths of them have it, yeah.
Just track one of them.
Just track the cell.
Colleen, did I, did I hear you right, um, so the annual maintenance is less for this program than the current one we're using, is that right?
Yes, yes, this is, this one will actually save us money. So, um, I think it's in that third paragraph there, the one-time cost is sixty-four hundred, so the first year, we're gonna pay sixty-four hundred, along with the first year of manu- uh, fee of forty-nine hundred.
I see.
So the first year, it costs you eleven-three, after that, it's forty-nine hundred for the next two years, and right now, we're paying sixty-six oh-one. So, you know, we'll have it paid for, recouped in three years, and then we'll be saving money, so.
Colleen, did we not know about Traversa, when we were looking at Versatran, or?
You did not, because we made, the committee made the decision to go first with Versatrans. But, um, we wanted to, we did decide to take another look at Traversa, and, and we wanted to make sure that the contractor was very comfortable with the routing system, because that's important to them, obviously.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second? Kathleen? Alright, alright, motion and a second to, uh, approve the Traversa Transportation Software. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks.
Very much for your work on that.
Alright, that ends, um, oh, nope, eight C, we have a report on enrollment.
Stay out there, if you like calling.
Yeah.
We're gonna get our money's worth in the next few months going.
Alright, so, I'm sorry, I didn't pull it up on my phone, um, it went up this month, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is unusual for us, but we'll take it. And I think it was mostly at the high school, if I remember right, so, that's really good, that those kids that maybe felt they couldn't make it, decided maybe they could, and came back, I don't know. I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to ask.
Well, there was a state law, you can't quit school at sixteen anymore.
Well, that's true.
So it's seventeen.
Yep, seventeen, yep.
So they.
Maybe they realized it.
So that's good news, I think we're gonna end the year above where we projected, but.
Alright, for the questions? Alright, then we have the financial report, and I believe that's also.
Yeah, I don't think I generally say too much about it, um, I, I don't think there was anything unusual in the reports this month, we're pretty much on track, we're spending.
Nothing jumped out at me as I looked through it. Board members, any questions? Thank you, Colleen.
Yep.
And, um, resolution sixteen dash eighteen, acceptance of gifts and donations.
Mm-hmm, yep, if you wanna read those, those are.
Yes, here we are. Well, again, we thank everyone who's worked in every capacity to support our school district, um, recognizing, uh, some gifts this evening from the Faribault Booster Club, a donation for Bruce Smith Field, a Ted Nelson Track Ticket Entrance. Um, includes a thirteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen-dollar item from Metcom, two thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars from Matt, Mattson Design, and nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-four cents from SPX Sports. Mr. Wolf, did you have anything?
No, thank you to all those companies and, uh, all the supporters of the Booster Club.
Yes, on behalf of the board, thank the Booster Club and those companies for their support. The Joann Stores, items valued at two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-four cents, a donation for community education programs. And Mercury of Minnesota, a, a forty-five-dollar donation to purchase chamber checks to be given to the Student of the Month program at the high school. So, we thank those, uh, companies and individuals, uh, responsible, um, we appreciate your support. Alright, I believe we need a motion to accept these.
Simult.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept these, um, gifts and donations, all those in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, my, my bad.
R, see, the R, no, you don't have.
No, oh, but it is a resolution, and I should've known that.
Okay, Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, this is six-zero.
Thank you, Mr. Court. Alright, other committee reports, I have nine, Insurance Committee, no report.
What we do?
Well, on my agenda, it says no, right there is.
There wasn't any.
Never mind, this copy was in error.
I think we got it too late today, or sometime today, so late anyway. Alright. The Insurance Committee met on April fifth, um, we got our renewal at this time, so we talk always about utilization, and for every dollar we paid at Blue Cross, they're paying out about ninety-six cents for our claims, which is higher than what it should be, it needs to be closer to eighty-five or ninety cents, and that makes us break even, so we're still running pretty high on our claims, but, uh, the good news is that when we went through our renewal process, because we belong to the South Central Service Co-op Pool, that really helps us, helps districts like us who have higher utilization to mitigate that increase. So for next year, we really deserved a sixteen percent increase on our insurance rates, however, two things happened. First of all, we had a bid last year, and the second-year cap on that insurance was nine, so regardless of anything else, the sixteen would've been reduced to nine, but because we're a member of the pool, it got reduced even further, so our increase was at five point seven percent versus the sixteen, so that really helped. Um, discussion was held, talking about future costs and ways to, uh, change the insurance plans, so there will be some look at those going into next year for the following year. Uh, we do have an, an open enrollment period now, happening right now for employees, if they wanna switch plans, they have an opportunity to do that at this time. So, starting next January, then, we will be looking at bids again, because every other year now, you have to bid out health insurance, so that will be bid out. Um, and we also talked as a committee about setting a meeting sometime next fall to look at our historical claims data. We are looking at self-insurance, and always weighing that to see if that would be a better option for us, and what that means is that the district would insure itself for health insurance, it's a little scary sometimes, because if you go over, then you have to pay the difference out of your general fund, but, um, our consultant's really helping us with that too. So we thought it would be a good idea to analyze our historical claims, to say, okay, what if we were self-insured in these previous three years? What would that have looked like for us, would that have made sense? So we can kind of get a baseline of where we think we can, we're comfortable with, and where we might've not been such, it might not have been such a good idea. So, um, they will, the committee will do that next fall, and then we also put in some information there to show the last, uh, current year and the pro- three prior years, what our needed increase was, and what our actual increase was, because we were members of the pool. So you can see there that in thirteen fourteen, we needed a twenty point one percent increase, we got a ten and a half. Fourteen fifteen, we needed a twenty-two point seven, we got an eleven point six. Last year, we needed a twenty-five percent, because it was a bid year, we ended up with zero, so those bid years are ending up to be really good years. And then this year, we needed a sixteen, and we got a five point seven, so it'll be really important for that committee to look at that information when they go into the bid year, to determine if that's a good option or not. I think we still requ- uh, request self-insurance bids, just to see where those come in at, and then weigh it against the other bids, just like we did last time. Um, then some changes with the VIBA happening effective next July one, and so we'll need to let our employees know about that.
When you do, or any company has, or di- district has self-insurance, do you have a, like, a reinsurance company?
Yes.
Backing you that you pay?
Yes.
Just in ke- okay.
For high claims, yep, you reinsure the high claims.
Okay.
Colleen, how, how long have we employed this benefits person?
Uh, our insurance consultant?
Yeah.
Paul, he's been here the whole time I've been here, and, um, I think that it's, was prior to me also, I don't know how.
And I'm not, I, if he happens to be watching on FCTV, which I doubt he is, but, um, I, I'm not questioning how good of a job he does or doesn't do, but have we, have we ever opened that up and shopped that around, or we've just had this one individual for X amount of years?
Not in the eight years I've been here, yep.
And, and the only reason I ask.
We, we actually, actually, um, we have started, we, we've been talking about, should we do something different?
Well, I'm on the Insurance Committee, I happen to miss that one, I, I would strongly encourage at least looking at other alternatives, no different than we open up a position and he re-appeals type of thing.
Yep.
And the reason I say that is, um, it, just help, you know, the self-insurance, it seems like it's gaining momentum. Um, you know, I, I, I get an email, uh, once a month for a consortium amongst Minnesota school districts. Unfortunately, Fridays are a bad day for me to do an into it type of thing, um, but, in the amount of school districts that are participating, I just have a hard time believing that every year, we're just not a good candidate, and, um, I, I think that that deserves a, a deeper, deeper dive, because I think most here in agreement, our insurance premiums are only going up, um, and, and the sooner we can potential, everywhere.
Everywhere, yep. Yep.
The sooner we can potentially, um, try to control our own destiny there, with a district this size and the number of people, I think it would be great to, to do a deep dive. It, it might not make sense, but to do a real deep dive into it, so.
And I think that's the, that was the plan for the committee, that's why the committee said, you know, next fall, let's just dedicate one meeting to look at our utilization, because that's, the claims are the claims of the claims, you can't change that, and that's what's going to drive the decision about whether or not it makes sense. Has to make sense in dollars in and dollars out wise, and you don't wanna pay more than what you need to, for sure, so I think that was the thought of the committee too. Let's take a deep dive at that and look at that and see if it makes sense.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you. Alright. Why is that black?
No, you ran out of battery.
Community education.
Well, I was worried about my, my hard copy here, because this one was in error, quite sorry. Um, the Wellness Committee, to be determined?
Well, Emory couldn't make it tonight, so.
Alright, then that brings us.
Well, I'll just speak to the, it made, and we handed out, uh, Fandana's, and the color dash, the staff, which I thought was a great idea, that the Wellness Committee worked on, the staff. Throw that in there.
Thank you. Um, item nine C, Community Education, Mr. Coleman?
Good evening, uh, first of all, I should probably introduce myself, this is my first meeting here, uh, Brian Coleman, Service Learning Coordinator, uh, and.
Wait, it's, I'm sorry, it's your first meeting, and you didn't bring treats?
Oh, is that, sorry, nobody told me that, nobody told me that.
Sorry, Mr. Coleman, I apologize.
We'll make up for that next time, um, but, uh, I was supposed to do the Community Ed Report, which is actually my report, uh, kind of what's been happening with service learning. I was told, I was advised that you guys were pretty much up to speed, pretty much till last month, so I'm just gonna cover from last month going forward. So, some of the ongoing activities that have been happening, uh, one that ended in March was, every, every month, I would take the Lincoln Elementary, fifteen students to Heritage House, and we would do activities, and we would also read, um, tell stories, we play bingo. And, uh, the, the kids got really, really, they had a great time with that. As well as the residents, I actually got an email from the owner there saying that she wants us to do it again, uh, we had to stop in March to help prepare them for their testing and things like that. Um, another ongoing activity is Abbott Two, which is the sophomores. I take the, a, a group of the Abbott students to Jefferson, we walk to Jefferson every, every week, uh, to work with the EL students there, uh, first through third graders, uh, we do reading, math, and social skills. Since March seventh, uh, going with a group of ALC students to Jefferson to work with the students at recess, we go three times per week, we know weather and my schedule permitting, um, to model appropriate play and team play, the feedback from that has been awesome from, from the Jefferson staff, as well as, um, ALC. I wanted to talk about some upcoming, oh, actually, last week, uh, we took a hundred and eleven students to the Business Expo. Those consisted of twenty-five newcomers, forty-five Abbott, ninth and tenth graders, twenty-nine ALC, and twelve after school, uh, stops program. The newcomers, it was a, it was a difference for them, that was the first time they've ever experienced anything like that, and, uh, to get their feedback as far as what they got from that experience was, was awesome. And I'm actually, um, tallying all of those responses and, and working with the chamber, with Kim, and trying to look at doing things, I don't wanna say differently, but, um, the timing. but the timing of it for, for our students is really difficult, because it happens towards the end of their school day, and transportation is an issue for a lot of our students to get back home. So, we're looking at that. Last week as well, we had career panels at the high school. We had career panels for the tenth grade English class, because they need to do a research paper on careers. The panelists consisted of law enforcement, healthcare, education, agriculture, manufacturing, making, and energy. Really great event. We had some great speakers and some great stories. They told their story, how they, career path. They didn't just start where they're at now. Thought that was eye-opening for a lot of students. They talked about their college experiences and some that didn't go directly to college, but ended up having to get some type of certification in order to be in the position that they're in now. Which brings me, oh, this week, the twenty-eighth, taking sixty middle school students to a career exploration event in Austin. We are taking them there. It's a hands-on event, and hopefully, they can gain a little bit more knowledge about what's out there. Which brings me to my final thing. Mark your calendars. Thank you, I appreciate that. May twenty-fourth, at the middle school here, we will be the host for Career Exploration Team Event. It's the, it's a hands-on event. We invited other schools from around the area. We've invited Medford, Kenyon, Wasika, Lonsdale, Northfield, and Morristown to identify a grade level or a group. With some of those schools being smaller, they can probably bring their whole middle school. We know that we have targeted our seventh grade class here, and that will be three hundred students that will be attending on our end. And hopefully, we have a large turnout from those other schools. So, the event is from eight fifteen to two P M. With the first forty-five minutes being designated for select groups at the high school, as well as ALC and AVE to attend for the first forty-five minutes. So, nine o'clock is when the middle school section will start. Our goal for this year is sixty to eighty vendors. I think that that's going to be very good. So, come check us out. If you have any questions for me, I'll stand up here for a little bit. And I don't have treats.
So, Brian, could you send me that agenda? You probably sent it to me already once, but then I'll send it and forward it to the board members?
Perfect, yes. Any questions?
Great work, thank you.
Sorry, my computer agenda is all blocked out. So, that brings us to Facility Committee. Todd, you mentioned a little bit about the progress with the DO. Any further details you'd like to share?
Well, I think most of you probably saw, Kathy, did you send that email out yet regarding our meeting in May?
Not yet.
Not yet. But, we're going to plan on, instead of having our normal meeting for the one-on-one, I'd like to take you through both of the buildings. So, after May tenth, take a look at your emails. And then, when we set up our one-to-one meetings for the month of May, we'll meet at either the DO or the FEC, and then we'll go through those. And actually, Jenna, if you and Hannah want to set something up and you'd like to go through those, it'd be pretty cool to have you go through those, too. I know you're seniors, but we can do that as well. So, pay attention to that. Both buildings are still on schedule. The district, the FEC is a little bit ahead of the DO. So, they'll probably get finished early. But, they're all scheduled to be done on time. Like I said, the FEC, we've already scheduled with contractors that we're going to be in there on the seventh. We're going to take our time with the asphalt. By the time they're supposed to do that anyway, school is out. We want to make sure that we do it right, and that involves getting the right temperature and, of course, weather pending. So, we may not have the asphalt in at May seventh. That could occur later, or probably later. So, we're not real concerned about that. But, everything else is going very well.
The new sidewalks at the middle school?
Yep.
I've had a handful of people say, what are they doing with them? Why are they making them bigger? I said, I don't know, I got a board meeting coming up, I'll find out for you. So, is that, is that to enhance the drop-off zone, or is that?
It's, a lot of that is handicap accessible issues that we have. I can find out more details from Kevin, but that's normally what we have. You have to have a standard width for the sidewalks. I know there is repair on one of the sidewalks that we have to do. Not repair, I think it was a concrete area that we need to redo. And that might cost, that might be a change order coming, about fifteen hundred. Nope, we got to fix it.
It is the drop-off zone, too. If you're talking about on the street?
Yeah.
That's the drop-off.
That's the drop-off zone.
That's the drop-off zone.
So, we'll have to repair that piece.
Are they repairing it up to build the drop-off?
It's new.
Sorry?
Yeah, right?
It is, alright.
There was no.
Yep, part of, part of what we're changing there is the student drop-off zone, so that parents don't have to come inside the parking lots. So, they're adding, they tore up that whole section there, and they're adding the concrete, so that parents can just drive off the street, pull in, drop off their student. The student then walks up to the school.
And that's the fifteen hundred dollars that Kevin was talking about?
I think so.
That's what he told me.
Is there going to be signs or pictures for parents?
Yep, signs, and then they'll have to, you know, the middle school will notify all their parents, too, to say, new procedure, when you're dropping off your student, don't drive in.
There were cars that keep coming out.
Flash on some.
You did.
Oh, that's right, they use their eyepads.
That'll hopefully help with some of the congestion.
Yeah, you did open up a concern, though, Richard, with that comment about the sign. During our spring and our summer, when we have activities on our fields at the middle school, and this is more of a public address than anything else, please keep your vehicles off of our grass. And don't drive on our trails. There's plenty of parking in the middle school parking lot. Walk to those events. Do not park in the grass and don't ride on the, on the.
But, we have budgeted twenty, thirty thousand of Chad's money. We replace that, right?
Chad's money? We're getting off.
Alright, it feels like that's moving along.
I got that public announcement in, so, thank you.
Alright.
We're losing it here.
Yeah, so let's get back on task here. Special Services, Rob Dunne.
Poor Rob. Good evening. The Special Programs Department and the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative have been busy hiring to fill the positions opened up by the new cooperative. Currently, we've hired approximately fifty percent of the teachers needed for the new program. Seven in the Alexander Learning Academy, which is the, the building that's located in Faribault, have been hired. So, all those positions are filled, except for the eighteen to twenty-one-year-old transition program. The positions at the Laura Baker Sun Pro, or the Sun, I'm trying to get these names right. The Sun Program at Laura Baker are still open. Those are for teachers licensed in developmental cognitive disabilities and autism spectrum disorders. So, we're about fifty percent of where we, where we need to be by August. So, we're in pretty good shape right now. Spring also brings in prom season. So, this year, the Faribault High School Developmental Adaptive Phi Ed Department and the Special Programs Department are sponsoring their second annual spring dance. We piggyback on the, on the high school proms. So, our theme is Frame the Moment. This is a dance for students who might feel awkward about going to the full formal proms. So, we use some of the proms sets. We have a grand march. We have a dance that includes line dancing and some other, some other familiar songs. And we have a luncheon for the students. That is on Saturday, May seventh. This year, it starts, the grand march starts at twelve noon, and the public is invited to the grand march. Although, if you want to stay for the dance, you would have to pay ten dollars. Students are free, but one of the ways we offset students free is we charge the adults ten dollars, which seems reasonable. Any are welcome to attend. Lastly, on a personal and professional note, last week, I was elected by the Minnesota Administrators of Special Education Region Ten to be their representative on the MACE Board. MACE is the special education directors professional organization that does lobbying for the, for the government, decides staff development for other special education administrators across the state. So, I'll be one of twenty representatives and representing our area on that board for the next two years. So, I just, I like to plug myself.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Any questions?
What is the, Jared, do you have a timeline for the coordinator, or?
Both coordinators at the cooperative have been hired. And I believe they've been approved by the Northfield School Board, because they're actually Northfield employees subcontracted to the cooperative. One comes after teaching seven years up north in a Setting Four program for students with behavior disorders. Very highly recommended. The other is a social worker with a lot of mental health background. The, and I, I didn't write down their names and don't remember their names, but the woman with experience in behavior disorder, she will be the, in charge of the Alexander Learning Academy. And the man who has a social work background will be in charge of the Sun Program at Laura Baker. See, I got the name right, that time.
When do they technically start?
They start July first.
July first, thank you.
I think one other thing, just to mention, so you're not shocked by it, is that we, we have two other communities that have expressed interest in joining the Co-op already. Oatana has expressed interest, and so has Medford, ironically. So, the SEFSEF will, we're going to talk about that tomorrow night and see what sort of action. That would be something very positive for us.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Alright. We have an action item. Item ten A. Consider approval of the twenty sixteen Faribault Area Learning Center Field Trip to the Autobahn Center, Sandstone, Minnesota, May seventeenth through the twentieth of twenty sixteen.
Good evening. I'm Cora Packard. I'm a science teacher at the ALC.
And I'm Jessica Peterson. I'm the English teacher.
And so, our plan is to take about fourteen students with us for four overnights and work on service learning up there with Autobahn Center. It's basically an environmental camp that serves kids and adults. And we'll be mostly being there, not as a true camper, but actually doing the service learning projects, putting in posts, doing trail maintenance. And then, we'll be doing some activities that allows us to do some of the, on things up there as well. So, a little ropes course and some canoeing.
The trip will be paid for through a grant that I wrote and received through Education Minnesota. So, there is no cost to the students or to the school.
It's always good.
Thank you.
Where's, where's Tim in this?
Unfortunately, we left him off this time.
Look at him.
It's a girl's trip.
Alright, well, that sounds like a wonderful opportunity for us. Thank you both.
Thank you both for organizing this.
Thank you for writing the grant.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you, sir. And a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the, I'm not going to read it all, Faribault Area Learning Center Field Trip. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright. Other items of information. Our student representative.
Alright, at the high school, it's been crazy the last few weeks. Two weekends ago, the theater had their spring musical of Fiddler on the Roof, which I heard was very awesome. Spring sports are just getting under the swing of things now that the weather's cooperating. We're now halfway through our season, which is crazy to think. Last Thursday, that we talked about earlier, at the home track meet, we had the dedication for the Ted Nelson Track. Booster Club did a nice job putting that on for the community, and it was a cool day to be a part of for history in Faribault. This past weekend, we had prom. As Rob said earlier, our theme was Frame the Moment. We had spent three days decorating the gym, and we had over a hundred and fifty couples who attended, which was a raise from last year. After grand march, we were bussed to the Muse in Minneapolis for dinner and the dance. We had awesome food. It was catered by Crave, that's at MOA and in the cities. After the grand march, we're bussed back to high school for post-prom, which parents set up and have those inflatables, games. There's a huge store and like raffle prizes. You can put your name in. And then, at the end of post-prom, there's a hypnotist that comes and all seniors who want to participate can. And then, after that, you're out to go home to sleep at four o'clock in the morning. The students and staff both had a great time. And after all that fun, now this week, we're back to students taking MCAs on their iPads. And that's something new. And next week, we will be taking AP exams for college credit for potential for kids who are taking AP classes. And also, next week, Student Council has a blood drive on May third. Lots going on.
Chairman, so thank you.
Is there any questions?
Having spoken of Facebook several times this evening, I did notice some pictures by the, by the prom chaperones posting. Looked like everybody was having fun.
One other, just to mention, I didn't know if you were going to mention or not, Jenna, but the Big Nine Music Fest is on the twenty-ninth. And that is at John Marshall this year. So, I've gone every year, and it's outstanding. If you get a chance to go down there, it's, it's really a treat to see the, the conference schools. We have two new schools this year, so it'll be interesting to see how they fit all of those schools in. So, should be great.
April twenty-ninth.
April twenty-ninth, yes.
School board members. Anyone care to share?
I believe there will be a prep sports segment on the Ted Nelson Track dedication. Ten o'clock news, care eleven, Wednesday night. I believe, unless there's another major celebration in Minnesota that passes late or something. But, that, that's the schedule as of now, I believe. And the other thing is Friday, May sixth, at seven o'clock, the Harlem Wizards are coming to Faribault to play the Faribault Falcon All-Stars. Brian, are you one of them that's playing? In the, in the basketball game, no? Anyway, the Harlem Wizards are a knockoff of the Harlem Globetrotters. We had them here three or four years ago. It's a great event. Ryan Lukin's doing a great job of organizing it. And I think we have about twenty-five staff members playing in that event. So, bring your kids, bring your grandkids, bring your nieces and nephews, whatever you got to do. Hope to see you there.
I'll just share. I was privileged to spend a day in St. Paul with Mr. Sesker. We visited six of our state legislator representatives and senators, our local representatives, as well as members of the education and tax committees, if my memory is certain.
That's correct.
I wish I had dramatic news, but we presented some ideas of basically coming out of the C organizations, Schools for Equity and Education. And have some hope that there may be some action on. Can you state the program, because I know I'll mess it up?
Yep.
That might offer some relief to local taxpayers.
Right, it's basically a thirty, forty, fifty million dollar tax relief. There are three bills that are being proposed out there. We, of course, hope all three will pass. The thirty million dollar tax bill is the ag credit for farmers. That goes against the net tax capacity, which is our bond issue. They assess all the acreage for farmers. And some of the farmers are really being stressed with a lot of the taxes that they pay to help support some of the bond issues. And that proposes to cut that, or reimburse them fifty percent of that revenue. It would have no effect on anybody else. The, the original worry was that that tax would be shifted onto residential and business. That's no longer true. It'd be strictly a, a credit for ag. And then, the forty million dollars is the reduction in the debt service. And the debt service is what we, if we have some debt service, although we wouldn't qualify, because you all know that a lot of our debt service has already been paid off. We're, we're very low in our, our debt service. So, as a result, we don't get any aid. But, some of the school districts that have just passed a large bond issue, for instance, Oatana, will probably see a lot of state aid to offset some of the cost for that and reduce their taxes. And the fifty million is the, I'm not sure if I got the debt service and the operating levy backwards, but one is forty, one's fifty. The other tax relief is the operating levy, which we just passed, which would help us. It would reduce our taxes by almost three hundred and fifty thousand a year for our Faribault community, which would be terrific. The main component within, if you really dig deep into the formula, is there's a constant that we use to divide the net tax capacity and the referendum market value, which is how much, the total of dollars within the district. But, we want to change those constants to variables. So, every time the formula changes, those variables, the dollars within those variables change. So, it stays the same each year for that proportion, rather than, right now, it's a constant. So, every year, the amount of our state aid goes down, and the amount that our local taxpayers have to pay goes up. So, by putting a variable in both those, the debt service and the, and the operating cap, or the debt service and the operating levy, we can make sure, get pretty close to. we can make sure, get pretty close to the commitment that you promised taxpayers right away. If the state's gonna pick up thirty percent, then five years from now, the state will pick up thirty cent, thirty percent, even though the, the values of property go up. Um, right now, that's not happening. So, that's the thirty, forty, fifty piece. It's the, uh, ag credit, the debt service, um, reduction, and also the operating levy reduction. Debt service doesn't help us right now because we're so low, and we don't have very many bonds out right now, but the operating capital certainly does help us because we just passed a levy.
Would it help with future bond issues, or would that?
Yes. Yeah, if, if it gets approved, that variable will be placed in there, so in the future, it would help.
So, is that coming out of this committee, and then it'll be proposed to legislature, or where does it stand in that?
It's in, they're all in bills right now.
Oh, they are?
So, they will go, it goes through the conference committee right now, and if it gets passed conference committee, um, then they'll put it in there. Both the House and the Senate are doing something unique this year, they're just pouring everything into one proposed bill. And so, they're gonna bring that to the floor, I'm not sure how it's gonna get through, but, uh, they'll propose it as one big thing. Obviously, if they can come together and agree with both of them, which isn't gonna happen, then it'll go to the governor and get signed. I'm assuming that won't happen, so then it'll go back to conference committee, where they'll try to iron it out and then start negotiating. So, that's where those three, we really emphasize at the very minimum, we would like debt service relief. Even though it doesn't help us, it could help us in the future, but it helps most of the outstate schools tremendously for that tax relief. So, if there's one that we want for sure out of that, and that has mutual agreement with the governor, the House, and the Senate, we think that that will at least get through. But if we get the other two, that's great.
In, in relation to the calendar, w- where would that, where would we know a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Well, the session is supposed to end, it's supposed to be a pretty brief session.
May twenty-second?
What is it, May?
I think it's May twenty-second.
Yeah, I think it's a week earlier. Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're thinking that they're getting done, so hopefully they will.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Well, Mr. Sesker, any further additions?
Yeah, um, my crash was great, um, we went to that, uh, I think it was last week, and, uh, just a big thanks to local law enforcement, um, our ambulance, first responders, fire department, and all the great sponsors. All schools were there, represented the eleventh and twelfth grade classes of all the schools, um, and it was really a, a nice, um, reenactment of, of that. Thank you guys understand what the mock crash is, so it was very well done. We had kindergarten roundup, and the numbers, again, depending on what happens next year with our newcomer population, it looks like it is trending to be about twenty kids per kindergarten section, so that's based on all of our data that we've analyzed, but we know how our population works, and so I don't see that going anywhere but up. We don't have space for more kindergarten classrooms, so if it does go up, we're gonna have to figure out a way to squeeze those little kiddos in that kindergarten room. So, we are constantly monitoring that, but right now, it's tracking the way we thought it was, so we will see next fall. Uh, let's see, attended a C meeting, got more information with legislative shore, and, and as Tom said, not a lot going on right now. It's not gonna have probably much happening except for tax relief. Track dedication was great, thanks to Chad and, um, the boosters and, and Ted Nelson, his daughter Mara, and everybody else that was involved in that process. It was a great, great thing, and I, I know I've missed some people, but we really appreciate, on behalf of the school, everything that's been done. The, if you go to that gate, and I really encourage you, just go down there and check it out, uh, the Bruce Smith Field and the, and the Ted Nelson Track area. They, MetCon and, and they did a great job for, for that whole piece, and really donated a lot of their time and money. Uh, let's see. And I think that is all I, oh, I did a follow-up, remember the kids that came and presented? So, I made sure I went back to Ms. Baca's classroom, and we had a little discussion on protocol, our, our process, and, and how much that meant to you guys, and the kids were pretty excited that you listened to them, and, and they, uh, they kept on asking me, are we gonna have longer recess?
More of them.
And do we get iPads, uh, in a, next tomorrow? And so, what I told them is that when the board changes policy, it takes at least a year to implement those little things, so they, they'll hold up. So, I wonder, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sesker. Alright. Then I will review the dates to remember. Tomorrow, April twenty-sixth, subsec, a four-thirty meeting at the district office. Uh, April twenty-eighth, um, three P M, the Facility Committee meeting at the district office. I'm sorry, I'm gonna jump ahead so I can at least say the days. Alright, um, May fourth, a Wednesday, uh, three-thirty P M, a wellness meeting at the district office. May ninth, a Monday, work session at the district office at five-thirty P M. May tenth, Tuesday, Community Education Advisory Committee meeting at three forty-five, Tuesday, May tenth. Uh, Monday, May sixteenth, seven-thirty A M, the finance meeting at the district office. Uh, also, on the sixteenth, at three-thirty, the curriculum advisory meeting at the district office. May twenty-third, uh, five-thirty P M, the regular board meeting scheduled for this location. And Monday, May thirtieth, is Memorial Day. And it was mentioned earlier, I'm gonna back up, on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, is a career, uh, career hosting at the middle school. So, uh, at eight fifteen to two. So, I believe that covers it, unless I hear otherwise, we are adjourned.
Need a motion?
Motion. So moved. We are re, uh, reconvene, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Yeah, they did.